Thank you. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session occurring on Tuesday, June 25, 2024, commencing at 7:00 p.m. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Salah Houdin, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Stewart, and myself, Council President Kritzler. There are three items on the agenda tonight. 2025 to 2026 budget process department overviews, 2024 process for updating council benefits and the mayor's salary, and council talk time. The first item on the agenda is the 2025 to 2026 budget process department overviews. Kelly Cochran, Finance Director, will introduce this item. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. I just cannot believe it is July 25, and we are here, ready to go over 100 pages of department budget overview. So I just want to thank all of the director's team, as well as staff, for the effort it took to get these together in a pretty short amount of time, just given where we are in the process. I wanted to introduce you to some of our new financial analysts back here. I'm going to ask them to stand as I introduce them. We have Daniel Morgan, Haley Zercher, and Blake Ruiz. They have all joined us within the last two months. They have been phenomenal adds to our department and to this process. I hope that you'll get to spend more time with them, get to know them as this year rolls along. So they join Ryan Edwardson and Sandy Jaeger, who have been with us for a while, but it's just been a great team and happy to have their input into this. This evening, what we are here to provide you is the department overviews. I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes, first of all, just orienting you to where we are in the process, as well as changes that really impacted all of the budget offers. So walk you through a little bit of that, and then we will start through the presentations, going in alphabetical order and just rotating chairs up here as we go. So as I mentioned, this is sort of early in the process for us in terms of sharing information. We are currently in the June timeframe where baseline budgets have just been put into the hands of departments for review. We are actively now going through those, making sure that everything looks right, and waiting to make adjustments as they go through that process. We also have some external costs that, right now, are just forecasted. We expect to receive final numbers from some of those agencies not until later in August. So some of the numbers that we're working with are still forecasted and will really be so until you receive the final budget. I wanted to take a moment and just sort of orient new council members to what a budget offer is and how the structure of our budget rolls up. So in our budget, there are about 12,000 line items. Those roll up to nine departmental budgets. Those budgets then roll up into programs or lines of business, discrete business areas that the city is focused, and we are able to identify the direct costs attributable to providing those services. So when you receive or look at a budget offer, it really is a line of business. It is not really, in most cases, a departmental look. In some cases, yes, but in some cases, no. So, for example, Development Services is a budget offer that contains our Development Services staff, which we provide service from the Fire Department, the Planning Department, and the Public Works Department. So that is a citywide budget offer. The Planning Department takes the lead on that budget offer. Carol, Helen will be providing you information on that offer tonight. So the information that she is providing an overview of is that cross-departmental business look, not the departmental look. So I just wanted to make sure there is clarity on that. And then to share some of the information that I'm sure some of it won't surprise you, but I want to make sure that you're aware of what we've been adjusting on our end. So no surprise that there are increases in salaries and benefits. Just a reminder that we have a lot of different unions that we work to support, and they have different increases that are applied to them. So when we're looking across business, our budget offers, each one is impacted different by those types of increases. We've been spending a lot of time looking for the program alignment that we would expect to see in our programs, revenues directly aligning with the direct costs. And as we have been going through the budget, we've been making adjustments that we are able to now because of the recovery that we've experienced. We've been able to shift some of the costs back to programs that were reduced. And so there are changes because of that. We also have had a change in how we're dealing with some of our costs. So the software subscriptions, as well as cellphone costs, which were typically distributed or allocated out to departmental budgets, have now been centralized in our Technology and Information Services Department. That's due to guidance from the State Auditor's Office because of a pronouncement that was made, really just requiring us to do that and provide information. So there was decreases in some budgets and increases for TIS for that. As council is aware, during the last budget, or during this last year, we've updated our indirect costs, as well as our fleet costs due to the fleet study. And those will impact budgets differently, depending on their usage for each parts of those systems. We have external factors, such as rate increases from PSE or from wireless providers. Again, different cost bases for these differences, so you'll see a difference there. We also have some negotiated contract increases, which we have done our best to call those out in the noteworthy changes section of the baseline budget slides. We have included them in the baseline. It really is just maintaining our service, but we've seen increases. Examples are jail costs or Microsoft subscription or licensing costs from TIS. We also have the implementation or the taking on the maintenance of infrastructure that we have been working to build in the past that are now coming online. That hits both the technology side of the house, as well as capital projects. So as we build projects, we work to maintain them. So costs then become a burden of the maintenance divisions. This is known ahead of time. As we start down the path of capital projects, we have an idea of what the impact will be, and we work to make sure that we adjust them when needed. Is there any questions with that? I just want to make sure that it's kind of clear what's going on across city budgets.
Councilmember Fields?
So with the TIS change and the methodology, was there much of an impact to the general fund?
So there's really not a change to the general fund. Really, all what we're doing is taking the costs from all of the departments in the general fund and moving those to Technology, Information Services. That department sits in a different fund, so that we'll just be doing a transfer from the general fund to cover the cost. Some of the software was also in the utilities or other major funds, and we'll make sure that the revenue follows those costs, so there's no burden. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So I will hand it over to Melissa Files, Chief Operating Officer, and we'll begin with the Executive Department.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm just going to go through the Executive Department budget, and at the end, would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The mission of the Executive Office is to uphold the mission and the vision of the city and make strides towards the community strategic plan. So kind of those big five elements, which are housing, diversity, equity, and inclusion, environmental sustainability, public safety, and infrastructure. We do that through a diverse set of divisions, which include kind of all the divisions that you see there. We manage the City Attorney's Contract, as well as the Prosecutor's Office is under the Executive Office, as well as Environmental Sustainability and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. The Executive Office really has a little over 31 FTEs, which is different than what appears on the slide because, as Kelly said, we are lead on some cross-departmental offers. Namely, in the Prosecuting and Attorney's Office, under that is the SCORE Jail Contract, which is managed by police, and the Community Outreach Offer that also contains police personnel, as well as Communication Office personnel. And communication resides in the Executive Department. Some of the performance measures you will probably recognize, while others are new for us. And so we are changing the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion performance measures to align with the draft Respect, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Plan. So those will be new. The prosecutor is also adding some new measures regarding the number of criminal cases that are reviewed, as well as filed by the prosecutor's office. Many of our one-time enhancements for this budget were dedicated to the Implementation of the Environmental Strategic, or sorry, Environmental Sustainability Action Plan and technical help for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisor, as well as small adds for communications in the areas of photography. The challenges that we are looking at are really shared by all the departments in the city. So you will hear from them tonight. And these things that are called challenges are continually on our work plan. And they include things like affordable housing, getting ready for light rail, environmental sustainability. So we will continue the work of the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan and implementing that, as well as maintaining all the city assets that we have, which are numerous. So that's all I have for you, but I am happy to answer any questions about the information that was given to you.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember, Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. So I know, I think it was the first budget I participated in, we had reduced the Communications Budget. Does this bring us back to where we were pre-pandemic?
In the 2324 budget, I believe we are still, we still have minus one FTE in the Communications area, if I recall correctly.
Okay, good to know. And then it's back on the, one of the first slides. I think our packet had SROs in there, and I think that was removed on this presentation?
Yes, that was removed. It's actually the SCORE contract that is.
Okay, great, because I was curious about that in particular. Okay, that's good for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, two quick questions. On the prosecuting attorney, I saw the 18% increase. Did you, if you mentioned something about that, I missed it.
Yeah, so that is the SCORE contract.
Okay.
So that contract goes up every year. So that's what that is.
And that impacts the total budget by 18%?
It impacts that total offer by 18%.
And then the other question, in particular, on the sustainability. When we see the budget, will you show us will you put the delta or the increase in terms of what we're going to accomplish? Like some, not your measurement or your dashboard measurements, but specific changes? We're moving from this level of sustainability actions to this, and show us the changes. Will we be able to see that?
Certainly, we can share that with you. I don't know if it'll be in the budget document itself, but Ms. Liebeck, you know, keeps control of that, so we can certainly show you a table of kind of what's complete versus what we still have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick clarifying question on Council Vice President Forsyth, since you have that up there. So there's still a 21% decrease on the Community Outreach line. And in ours, it was because something was discontinued. Can you note what accounts for the 21% decrease?
So I believe it was because the School Resource Officer Program was taken out, but.
Oh, it was taken out and moved, or?
Yes, it was taken out of that offer.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I guess I have a follow-up to that before I ask my question. When you say it was taken out of this offer, was it reallocated somewhere else?
Yes, it is in police.
Okay. All right, so I have an overarching question that actually applies to all the departments. And thank you to the directors for all the work on this so far. Are the, since we have revisions to the performance metrics, is the Civic Engagement Team going to be evaluating? Or how are they going to be interacting and learning about the new, the new measures?
Civic's results team for this budget cycle is focused on our Budgeting for Equity action plans. So they will be coming in, taking a look at our Budgeting for Equity program, what we're trying to achieve, providing feedback after a presentation on the action plans, and helping us try to determine what is, what is the plan forward? What is the community expectations for the next budget cycle when it comes to that topic? It has been a while since we have had what we call a Dashboard Measure Review. These are indicating performance measures. There is kind of a lot that goes on that rolls up to these. Certainly, that is something that we can look on, putting into our work plan either for the non-budget year or our part is the next budget.
It was my understanding that they had previously been involved in this. So if I have that wrong, that could be. But I do know, I guess this is just, you know, for the council, we had an interest in looking at that at our retreat. And I guess if the, it just means, you know, maybe we might want to dig in there or make sure we're doing our due diligence on those if the Civic's results team won't be doing a draft review of those on behalf of the community.
Yeah.
And that's for us.
Some of the prior information that I've provided, and I'm certainly happy to provide it again, is the outcome map for each one of our performance, or each one of our budget priorities. So it allows you to look at the performance measures for a whole priority and how they interact with each other and roll up. So that might be a good place to start when you're looking, so you're not a little bit disjointed by a departmental look.
Sure, I understand that. And I think it is revisiting some of that, that the council had been interested in. I'll just ask one of my original questions, since I've now taken a little bit of time. I wanted to check in, if we could go to the FTEs or back to that initial summary slide on the Ready AR program. So in the 2324 budget, council elevated the lead role for that and then assigned funding for a limited duration role to support that work. That just didn't happen in this biennium to date. I, the most recent time that I checked in on it, I got a response from staff on June 13 that that FTE, limited duration FTE, was currently being hired for. So, oh, this is a change again. So our packet calls this a right size, and I just wondered if we could discuss it a little bit because it seems like council didn't get a chance to see what that would look like with two FTEs in this biennium.
So what council approved last biennium was supplemental dollars, which doesn't really have an FTE attached to it. And you are right, we are recruiting for that position right now. So when it's a right size, it means those one-time dollars come out. Now it will come back in the budget as an ongoing enhancement, essentially, for that program.
So we'll expect to see that second FTE tonight. We're just on the baseline.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Yeah, thank you. And Councilmember Stewart covered one of my questions. So I think my other question was very specific to the performance measures on the dash, the community satisfaction rating. Not necessarily budget-specific, but the, looking at the number of responses to the annual community survey and seeing a drop-off from 21 to 23 of about 1,200 responses, but then looking at the, you know, the following percentages of community members responding, I guess positively. Just engaging with community members, are we finding a gap in those that are dissatisfied? And so they're not taking the survey? And maybe focusing on ways to engage as diverse of communities as possible in looking at the survey? That just was surprising that we had such a drop-off in two years.
So we're doing a couple of things. One is we're doing, you'll see, I think, the results of the most recent community survey pretty soon. But we have concentrated on translation services, reaching those that, you know, may speak another language. So it's hard to take a survey in English. We're also pinpointing, trying to pinpoint those pockets that we don't hear from a lot. So you will hear a little bit more about that when the new community survey comes out. So we're trying kind of different things to get people to respond.
Other questions? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. If we could go back to the overview slide real quick? Thank you. Looking at the percent changes, it seems, it feels like maybe these equate to COLA a lot of it, a lot of the changes. Is that, that is the case? Seeing a lot of head shaking, okay. And then I'm interested in the council-specific budget line. Since the Salary Commission has yet to start their work, how that number is derived?
Forecasted estimate.
Okay. So you have a set number you anticipate that they will? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, no idea where that would land, but know that we need to have some capacity there. So right now, we're just working with an estimate. As we go on this year, if we learn anything more, that's great. And then we'll just work to move that estimate to an actual when we know more.
Thanks.
Great. Seeing no other questions, I will, I will jump in just with two notes of my own. One is just going back to the Ready conversation, seeing that it's being reduced. I guess the right-size thing was taken away in the current draft. But I do think, one of the things I heard at our council retreat was actually a lot of interest, and you can see it on the list of priorities shared, was actually a greater investment in the Ready work, not less. So I guess when I think about right-sizing, it actually would be more resources. And in our retreat, I think there was a lot of interest from the whole council in making sure that we see that. But it might be that there's also some changes as we move on from the planned doing.
This is really just, part of the decrease there is due to the amount of the position that was identified, the amount that we forecasted versus the position that was filled. So there was changes in benefit selections. When we estimate a salary, we estimate it fully, a fully loaded salary. So the selections of the staff have caused a decrease there as well. So it's not really driven by services. It's just what the cost of that FTE has been.
Okay.
And again, this is baseline budget offer, so service enhancements to it would be coming separately.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And I know we have a lot to get through, but I will just note in follow-up to a few questions that I think Councilmember Stewart had asked, and I think a couple others about performance metrics. I do know this has come up cycle after cycle, where we often start asking about the metrics while we're in the budget process, and then it's not really the time to talk about it. So it might make sense for us to get that kind of comprehensive list of the metrics from you, which is basically what appears in our packet, but kind of rolled up together and schedule some time before we start this budget process. Because we already have the metrics to have council have a discussion about those if there's any feedback in advance of this budget. Because I think we always miss it, and then we never actually have the time or to dedicate the time right after the budget to really review. So, you know, we'll be interested in getting council's perspective. But if there's the time for us to be able to fit it in this year, I think it's always one that we say, the next year, the next year. And it would be good for us to have that revisiting. Similarly, excited about the Civic Results Team engaging on our new equity work. Wasn't clear to me that they weren't going to be engaging on the enhancements and reductions. I think they used to review the kind of the whole budget. So it does feel like we're missing out on that a little bit, and would be interesting to discuss that in the future meeting.
Yeah, for the last couple of budget cycles, the Civic's results team has had more of a focused look, starting really in 1920. So it was very helpful to have them. 2020, whatever year that was. I don't know anymore. So we have been utilizing the Civic's results team differently because our needs changed, and we're trying to be adaptive and, you know, get feedback that is relevant. Certainly, no harm in providing an opportunity to engage the Civic's results team as we have in the past. That's not a problem to plan for.
Yeah, I'd just say, I found it very helpful, especially when we've had to make hard choices around reductions, to have had the feedback from a kind of focused group of residents on whether it makes sense to them. But don't need to upend the process, just a little bit of feedback.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Quick question before we go too much further into our 95 pages. On this page alone that we're looking at, that's got the baseline budget offers, we see a number of changes. And I just wanted to see if there were other changes throughout the document that we needed to know about or that we should. Changes such as diversity, equity, inclusion now reads Ready. Criminal justice now reads Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Right sizing has been deleted, and School Resource Officer Program discontinued has been deleted. So just wondering if there are other things that we, as council, need to know have been changed in the document?
I do believe that there was continued editing. So when we get to those slides, we will point those out. If directors are aware, we call.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And hopefully, after this, if there's an updated version, we can get that uploaded for the public to be able to look at the current, and they can follow along with us with the screen share. Thank you for pointing that out. So let's, we'll move along as well. And for questions, I think I'm realizing, because we have to get through these 95 pages, maybe we'll limit it per item to one question per council member, in case you have a burning question.
Hopefully, information from the Finance Department looks familiar. This is information that was really presented as part of the template overview. So our mission is really all about being partners with those that we support, whether internally, externally, we want to come to the table and help move things forward. We are a full-service finance department, everything from accounting to financial planning, risk management, utility billing. Our primary budget offer is that of fiscal accountability. There are utility offers, which do house additional finance staff, as well as the streets and traffic safety offers, which now we have some TBD staff assigned to. In our offer, we have added some new FTEs. We also are seeing increases in the insurance. We did have some expenditures that fell off. We had some supplemental dollars that we no longer need. So we've made some decreases in our line item, but overall result is about a 5% increase. I don't anticipate much changes to our offer. Most is known. Our performance measures really all roll up to, at this level, the kinds of things that rating agencies and external stakeholders that are interested in our accountability would look to. So we point to things that we receive feedback from outside of the city to help demonstrate how we're performing, the State Auditor's Office, rating agencies, and things like that. The work that we had assigned one-time dollars for is all completed. We've seen the development fees be implemented as of February, and the indirect costs are represented in the baseline offers that you're looking at today. Our budget challenges are all about really resource limitations. And it's not really dollars as much as it is staff. I feel very fortunate to be in the process of onboarding nine new staff members across our department. It feels phenomenal. It feels phenomenal, and it's a lot of energy behind it, but it takes some time. And we are already dealing with a work plan backlog due to the intensity and duration of our D-365 implementation. So while we're working hard to get caught up on that work plan, especially report development and some process improvements that really impact not just our department but citywide, we've got another portion of our D-365 implementation to take care of, and other citywide technology projects are an impact to us. We seem to be the hub of all connections and integrations that need to be made, and so we try to make sure we've got capacity reserved for those as well.
Great. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Fields?
So I know I should know this after all these years, but I'm going to ask it, and maybe there's a clarification that helps the council. I get my old life mixed up with this life sometimes. So when we, in my old life, when we talked about baseline budget, we're talking about what it costs to do the same level of service that we're doing in the current budget. Is that, that's the same thing, correct?
The only time that there is something new in a baseline budget offer is if council has seen it sometime during the biennium. So if there is something that you have, you know, provided approval to implement, that would be in the baseline budget offer, correct? It is the same level of service at the revised cost.
So when we're talking about adding FTEs to something that we believe needs more attention, that really would come under service enhancements.
That's correct.
And that's not in this?
That is not in that. So we are, that is the next step for us, is to figure out where we are with our baseline budget, then we match that up with the revenue forecast, and we marry that up with, you know, how do, how do we balance?
Perfect. And the reason I bring that up is so that we, council doesn't use tonight's time to debate service enhancements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you so much. I had a question on the slide with the performance measures, and there's a measure about monthly financials being completed by a certain date, and I wonder if there's an opportunity for a nuance here now that we have this webpage where monthly financials can be reported to the public. I think if management needs a day on the calendar every month, that makes total sense. I, I think as a community, having a day of the month where the community can expect to go and be able to check in on things, maybe that's not the 10. I want to give grace for that, you know, I understand that, but posted to the public by whatever that expectation is, I think that that could be a possible change for that. Thanks.
Other questions? All right, let's move on to fire.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Fire Chief Adrian Shepherd. Our mission statement is that we can passionately, proactively, and professionally protect life, property, and the environment. So overview of our fire department, we have several divisions within the fire department, our fire suppression and basic life support. This is your initial response. This is typically what you see with either a fire engine or an aid car. Our advanced life support is one of our medic units. This is the highest level of field emergency medical care that one can receive in our area. And our technical rescue, this is low-frequency, high-risk operations in which we have highly-skilled people coming out to actually respond to very difficult responses. Our hazardous materials team, there's also a increase in complexity within our region just due to our industry, and we need to have people who are adequately trained to handle some of the very difficult hazardous materials that we have. We also have our mobile integrated health team. This is something that, you know, we really want to highlight throughout the budget process and every day, because we're really doing great things in our community. And then what's not shown here is our fire prevention team, and that's where we deal with inspections, education, and investigations. So our baseline budget offers, as you can see from the slide, we have for Safe and Resilient, our fire and medical operations, we have 146 staff members. You can see that the current budget is 57.7, and our forecast of 25.26 would be 6.76. This is attributable to, you know, increase in like COLAs, which have driven up some of our cost. As we go through the slide, you can see that we have also our fire prevention services, where you show 5.5 people. We actually have 12 people, but that will be covered later on through Director Holland, who has some of our people under her staff. And then, of course, we have our fire, fire support services, which is our, how shall I say, our fire support services, 12 people who really help us, these are the people where the traction is, this is where we really get our work done administratively. And so you can see that the increase is from 77.5 to 85.3, which demonstrates about a 10% increase. So on performance measures, so some of our indicators, cardiac arrest, you can see that we've had a really good increase. Again, when you weigh us against the national average, we're doing quite well, even in 2021, which was our lowest, as shown here, which was 48%. 2022, we went to 60. We haven't received data for 2023, however, we believe that will come in around the same area, about 60%, maybe even a little bit higher. And then, of course, we will endeavor to make sure that we keep that high with about a 60% cardiac survival rate. So some of the other performance areas, when you look at the percentage of response times, we're getting out the door, we want to reach, meet the bench talk of about 90% of the time. We haven't been able to do that, so there is room for improvement in there, and we're working internally to see how we can optimize our response. And a percentage of time that we, that there's a delay or a minimum staffing, a daily minimum staffing problem, we never have that issue, and thank you for that, we really appreciate Continuing with our performance measures under Safe and Resilient, looking at our fire protection class, fire protection class is three. Just so you know, it's, it's on a scale of one to 10, so three is actually quite well. That means that, and you won't hear many fire chiefs saying this, so kudos, but that means that we're well-resourced and equipped to actually do the job. So again, a great level of appreciation for your support in that area. Percentage of scheduled fire and life safety inspections, this is an area where we endeavor to do better. You can see in 2023, we were only at 50%. We do have some significant challenges, we're working with staff to try and improve that. You know, we brought on a consultant in the city who's going to help us optimize our performances, and we hope that that yields something for us as well inside fire prevention, to make more certain that we're able to get out and actually complete 100% of our inspections. And the percentage of life fire, of fire safety systems, again, we're about 80%, 84%. We would like to get that up to 90. We think it's important to be able to get out and actually do this. So percentage of fires contained to the room of origin, actually, last year, we did quite well, about a 96%. That's relatively unheard of, so we're doing a great job on that. We put the percentage at 80%. We don't want to overpromise, so 80% is quite well, and we hope to continue to be able to do that. Percentage of response times from dispatch to arrival, again, we didn't meet the, what we want as far as a benchmark, we had 77%. We'd like to get that up to about 90% and maintain that 90% moving forward. And a percentage of time that fire stations respond to calls within their service area, 81% of the time is actually quite good. So that means our people are staying in their district and making sure that they're able to respond to the people in their community. We'd like to have that up to 90. And just so you know that, when we're dealing with our fire systems, when we're getting out and we're doing our inspections, we're inspecting over 3,000 systems out there. So our one-time enhancements, and you see a number of 4.7. This is really, and part of it is in our construction development review. This is an amount for Microsoft, an amount of 383.11, 811, and this is really a carryover. We hope to use this till the end of the year. We have fire medical operations, general fund surplus. This 2992 was for the purchase of three aid cars and two fire engines, and we're in the process of getting those into our inventory. Our peer support, we're exhausting the remainder of our ARPA funds, and this is part of our mental health. Our paramedic attrition, this is something that we've been working on, making sure that we're able to actually onboard people, get them through, not only through the interview process, through the hiring process and the education, because it takes a long time. So as we're losing people, we have to make sure that we get them in, we have to get a little bit of an overlay, get them in, and actually get them through school, so we don't have that dip in service. So that's where you'll see a little bit of a bump in, in the number. And then, of course, we're looking at our fire, our fire PPE, our bunker gear, this is the firefighter's ensemble. We asked for 90,000, and we, this is in progress, we're still working on our gear to make more than certain that our people are able to respond in safe and appropriate gear. So we do have some significant challenges, but none that are insurmountable, and I think that's important. You know, we come before you regularly to talk about our overtime budget. This is one of the things, when I say that we're 100% staffed every single day, sometimes we have to fund that through overtime. So we're trying to find that sweet spot where you have the adequate number of people versus the adequate amount of overtime, and how do we balance that? And trying to balance that while we have people leaving the organization at the same time, so it's very difficult. Our training, which ties into some of that overtime, making sure that we can get people into the organization, get them trained and get them online. One of the contributors is that we recently had a class, we went through a lengthy process of getting people into the class, and of the six people that we, we hired, only two were able to make it through. So it takes some time to actually reflect from that and actually onboard people. So you'll see how that overtime, if we get to the granular level, you'll see where training actually has a significant amount of overtime. So again, these are all interrelated. Our apparatus and maintenance replacement, we continue to make sure that we modernize our fleet, we're looking at the next generation, obviously, with the electric vehicle, but one of the things I recognize very early on coming through the door was the age of our fleet. Age of the fleet means that they're going to be in the shop for a greater period of time. Not only that, but the parts are no longer on bench dock, meaning that we actually have to special order these parts, they have to be manufactured, and it takes an extended period of time to actually receive them. And so therefore, the vehicles are out of service for an extended period of time. So we continue to work on that to make sure that we do have a healthy fleet. Potential retirements, one of the things that we don't get, and, you know, maybe that's just the nature of the profession, is people telling us that they're going to retire. It's usually one of those last-minute type notifications for us. And so again, trying to reflect to that and making more than certain that we actually can have people ready to go, making sure that we do have lists, we're doing interviews right now. One of the things that we've done as far as to reflect to the potential retirements is that we've had what's called, and we brought it before you, we brought it before the Civil Service Board as well, but we do laterals, that shortens Academy times, and it has people who are ready to respond right now. And we've got something very new, and that's our exceptional hires, again, very modified Academy, shortened Academy, and they're ready to go. These people have already been firefighters elsewhere, have less than two years on, on the line. So we're getting some young, fresh people who do have experience. Again, it saves us an awful lot of money to get that done. Our ALS continues to be a challenge, not only because it takes a lengthy period of time to actually get people in and educated and then on the line, but finding those quality people. We're very discerning as far as who we want doing this job, and we're only going to get the right people because we have a very high standard. And fire prevention, we have a significant number of inspections. Development, with development becomes inspections, and so we're trying to meet those challenges. Again, we have somebody who has been contracted to really optimize the city, and we hope to be a part of that. I think we'll be talking to one of the consultants in the next couple of days to really tell them what our, some of our pinch points are, and, and be able to try and make sure that we do have a workforce in fire prevention that can meet the needs of a very demanding city. And with that, I will open up to questions.
Thank you. Other questions? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Could we jump back to the slide with the inspectors? So big changes here in the actuals, can you just elaborate a little bit on why that was?
Sorry, which slide?
Oh, you were on the right one.
This one.
No, other way. Oh, wait, maybe that was it, sorry. It had the 11%. Go back one. Thank you.
You said the 11%, right?
Yeah.
The other slide.
Yeah, that one. Can you just briefly talk, talk about why that big shift from 2021 to 2022? Was it staffing or?
Some staffing, not fully staffing. We tie ourselves to NFPA 1730 and the International Fire Code here in the city, and so there are certain number of inspections that can't be completed. So while some of it may be staffing, some of it is also just how we're configured, and so we do have a new fire marshal who's going to optimize that department. But yeah, we didn't, we're not able to get out there right now and do all of the inspections. But if you look at the, you know, we were coming out of, this was a very significant time for our city, we were coming out of COVID, we were short-staffed, there were so many other things going on at that time that.
So we did better in the early pandemic than we did in later pandemic?
We did.
Interesting.
Well, we had people here in earlier years.
Got it. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields?
Can we go to the challenges chart real quick? So what did you say about emergency management as a challenge?
Maybe I slipped over that. I don't know if I mentioned emergency management. That continues to be a challenge for us. You know, when we look at our, our staffing level there, we have two people who work emergency management in addition to the assistance by all of the deputies. But there is a significant role for our emergency manager to make sure that we have all the documents and all the plans in place for any type of significant event that may occur, which we hope never happens. We hope to write them and let them collect us. And so that's one of the, the challenges. I do think that we're, we're funded appropriately. Maybe we can, you know, look at how we, how we use our resources internally, but that's, that's the only area where I see that we have a significant issue with our emergency management.
I appreciate that. You know, based on what I've learned recently and what we all see around the nation, the number of emergencies in our country, and we're not going to be immune from that, is increasing dramatically. Floods, wildfires, heat, all kinds of stuff, so.
Absolutely.
It's, it's an area of concern for me. So it, it looks like these things are directly tied to those performance measures, the, the ability to catch up or manage these things will give you the likelihood for the success that you're trying to achieve on the performance measures. And the reason I ask that question is because I just want to be clear that you, you're not necessarily seeing, with the exception, exception of apparatus, maintenance, replacement, you're not necessarily seeing increase in resources or an increase in investment in this area. It's more about getting things, as you said, caught up because of retirements and training new people, et cetera, et cetera. Is that a fair thing to say?
I think that's about 90% accurate, you know, and I would say with a level of respect, there's probably one area in which we could improve in the city, but we continue to work on that with staff, working through finance and working with the, the other directors to make sure that we're, what we feel is appropriately staffed to cover the entire city. But yeah, I would agree with your statement.
And I would just add, also add, as a resident, as a council member, as somebody who's lived in this community a long time, apparatus, maintenance, replacement, that feels like a finance, city council, city leadership challenge more than anything, and I don't think that should be up there. I just don't. So that's my take on it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Yep, thank you. If we can go one slide back to the one-time enhancements, I know you touched a little bit on the paramedic attrition, and it seemed like. and it seemed like you had, from how you described it, and forgive me if I'm a little bit off here, but it seemed like you had started the work there. And if you haven't, is there a timeline on? It says status not started. Is there a timeline on when we will get moving on that?
Yeah, so we hope to get started almost imminently. We've had a significant number. To know our paramedic program and to know how many people have gone through the program over the past 50 years, you would be surprised that the number is actually quite low. And those people are now tenured and leaving in large number. And being able to get people in as quickly as they're leaving has been a big challenge for us.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I'm looking at the baseline budget offers slide in this one, and I just had a question on fire support services. I noticed that there's 12 FTEs, and just confirming, this is a two-year amount of $15,148,131. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or is there an extra digit on that?
Nope, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Quick follow-up question on that. Can you explain why we're seeing the decrease there?
So just working with finance, and I would have to defer to finance that we do see a decrease. But again, we're working to try and make sure that we're optimizing our, our budget.
So the decrease of the baseline budget in that particular offer is because of the realignment of a reallocation of FTEs. So there used to be like 16 FTEs on this particular offer. So we moved those four FTEs in other offers.
Great, thanks for the clarification. Councilmember Anderson.
With that added detail, can I follow up with that? Are those union-covered members, and that was approved by the union?
I have to come back.
Okay.
About that, I don't know.
All right, seeing no other questions, we'll get the follow-up on that. And thank you so much, Chief Shepherd.
And thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Next, we have human resources. Director Laird, go ahead.
Thank you, Council, very much. So here to talk about human resources. And our mission statement is we partner with our customers to achieve shared goals. And we really like that mission statement because it really does match what we do. We want to make sure that we meet our customers' needs, who are all internal primarily, and that they have their goals and we have our goals. Our goals primarily have to do with compliance of policies and laws and stuff. Okay. So the human resources department is a full-service department. We have seven different divisions, and we provide that robust customer service to meet all of the different needs that we have out there, recruitment, benefits, training, compensation, and such. So our baseline offer has, we have 16, just a little over 16, FTEs. And you'll see that our percentage and change is minus 1%. And that's because we have two limited-duration employees that would be coming off of the baseline budget offer. And we also saw some reductions in our health insurance claims this year, or last year, which was really good. So there were no premium increases to the health plan. Our performance measures are monitoring turnover rates. And we find that that's, that's important because it just, we need to keep track and see how many employees that we're losing. And then also percentage of new employees retained following the probation period. We find that that's important because we want to make sure that we're making good hires. And so ideally, because we do spend a lot of time training, that we're training and keeping employees as much as possible. And then average number of days to fill a vacancy. Because right now, what we're struggling with, and that's one of the challenges, is high turnover in our, in the city. And so we're trying to fill vacancies. So we want to fill them as quickly as possible to get different departments staffed back up as completely as possible. And then with regards to one-time enhancements, we have, as I mentioned, two limited durations. One is a admin specialist who handles all of our data entry for payroll. And then the other one is our senior HR analyst, who is the talent consultant that does our recruitments. And then, of course, tuition reimbursement. So some of the challenges that we are faced, that we are going to be facing for '25, '26, we've got implementation of the workforce management system, that is the HR payroll system, and integrating that with D365 and other systems to be as automated as possible. Again, recruitment and selection, we're still anticipating issues with that due to high turnover that we're anticipating continuing for a period of time. But hopefully, that should start to slow down. Training and organization development, just making sure that we're training our staff as much as possible, giving them leadership training and succession planning and such. And then labor relations and policy administration. Next year and the year after, we will have several labor negotiations that we're going to be doing. And we will be looking at policy and trying to identify areas that we can update our policies. And then, of course, compliance with state regulations. We do get a lot of different regulations that come on. Some of them affect like how we, how you are supposed to use temporary employees. Others might impact like workers' comp and stuff like that. So we have to really monitor those and make sure that we're in compliance. That's it.
Great. Other questions from the council? Not seeing any. Thank you so much, Director Laird. And next up, we have Parks and Recreation. Looks like we have Dave Tuchek here. Yes, Councilor Anderson.
Just a comment on, I appreciated seeing the performance measures for HR. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, councilmembers. I'm Dave Tuchek, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation Department. This evening, we're joined by our Parks and Recreation Director, Lorraine Hamilton. And Director Hamilton is going to be presenting this information tonight.
Yes, good evening. Sorry I couldn't be with you in person this evening, but I didn't think anyone wanted to share my COVID germ. So I'm going to be remote with you all this evening. So our mission statement for the Parks and Recreation Department is that we are leaders in providing sustainable parks, innovative recreation services, unique art and cultural experience, experiences that continue to build a high quality of life in Redmond. Here in the Parks and Recreation Department, we have a number of divisions. Our administration division includes parks planning and our leadership, as well as our administrative staff. Of course, our recreation staff is in our recreation division. We have arts and community events, and those are our citywide community events, as well as our citywide event permitting processes, citywide facilities, park operations, and then citywide customer service. This is our baseline budget. We span a number of different offers. And so as you will see, we've got, our baseline has increased in various places. Some of those are from things such as negotiated contract increases, like Kelly discussed, such as our janitorial contract. Additionally, the Redmond Senior and Community Center opening has increased budgets as we are operating a new facility. And then we have a number of new amenities that we will see come online in the next biennium, such as Light Rail will open, and we've got some landscaping that we will be maintaining, as well as the Redmond Central Connector. Phase three will be built out, and we will be implementing permanent dog parks throughout our system as well. And so we will see baseline increases for those, those things. Our performance measures first cover our recreation division. And so we anticipate that we will continue to serve a high number of our community in our recreation centers. We do look towards seeing how our, our new Redmond Senior and Community Center will impact our performance measures into the next biennium. Our, our next performance measures on the next slide are around the percentage of residents and employees in Redmond that have convenient access to parks, trails, and outdoor sports and fitness facilities. This is covered in our park plan, which we just updated. And so we're looking forward to continuing to ensure that people have equitable access to our parks, trails, and open spaces, as well as increasing tree canopy. Our next is around our city-produced events and special event permits, as well as sponsorships for our city-produced events. And finally, our performance measures around our citywide facilities. As you'll recall, we brought our facility condition assessment forward, and we are working hard in this next biennium to continue to improve the facilities within our system. This past biennium, we had a number of one-time enhancements. Most of them are either in process or complete. Some of these were operational things that were funded one time last biennium. Others were plans, such as the vegetation management plan, that really looked at our sustainability and climate resiliency, the street tree management around hazardous trees. And then on the next slide, things such as our Southeast Redmond Park Master Plan, which has been completed, and we are in process with the East Rail Data Equity and Activation. The last one was not started. We ended up not needing to complete this work because we were able to include it in the design work of our project up at Grass Mod, where we installed our first turf cricket field this last biennium. In our, in our Vibrant Connected, our one-time enhancements were the building strategic, security strategic plan, the Maintenance and Operations Center Master Plan, and the Facilities Condition Assessment, all which are in process and will be completed by the end of the biennium. The Parks and Recreation Department continues to have challenges. One of those is staffing. We have a decentralized model spanning a number of sites and have increased operational hours due to new community centers opening. We continue to need to have a balance between skilled supplemental staff and being able to offer cost of really competitive wages, increased minimum wage, and just making sure that we're able to staff our facilities between both supplementals and full-time. We have a cultural shift that's really happened within our department over the last few years, which we discussed with council as we operationalized the Redmond Senior and Community Center. Things such as our citywide customer service model, as well as the cost of service, excuse me, sorry, policy that was adopted has really just forced different ways of business and really challenged us to think differently about how we manage both our resources, as well as our centers, and continue to serve the community. And then we really are looking for how do we make sure we have the best data and software to be able to serve the customer, as well as make sure we have the data that we need. The city continues to grow at a rapid rate, as you all are very well aware. And we continue to just look for how we can serve that growing population with the resources that we have. And at the very end, we really just seek to ensure that we are maintaining the infrastructure here in the city and ensure compliance with standards, both in our parks, as well as our facilities and our programs. And so we really continue to look at how we can best do that with the resources and being good stewards of what we have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, Director Hamilton, and I hope you feel better soon. I wanted to ask a question about, to check in on some service levels. So in the 23, 24 budget creation, one of our, our key interests was restoration of services. With this baseline as presented for '25, '26, how are we looking in terms of restoration of services from prior to the pandemic? You know, there's been particular interest in the right-of-way maintenance and whatnot that was funded with one-time funding last time.
Yeah, those are, some of those items that Kelly referred to at the beginning that were put back into our operational, ongoing baseline budget. So that is also accounting for some of the increases that you're seeing in our baseline budget from last biennium.
So it'd be fair to say restoration complete?
Restoration complete.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. I also wanted to give just a moment to comment on a couple of the things. I found the performance measures listed on Slide 50 to be fabulously enlightening. We know, and see your team working so hard on all of the community-produced events, or excuse me, city-produced events, as well as, if it feels like there's been a lot going on in the city of Redmond, I mean, you can't walk in Downtown Park on a Saturday in the summer without running into a festival. Your team not only is beating their performance metric here, but it's really, it's speaking to the demand on the, on your team and the staff for this incredible work. It's also, as far as I could tell, the only department that has a performance metric assigned to it to fundraise privately for its own operations, and that is, you know, to produce these wonderful events. So thank you so much. I just wanted to give a shout out to how enlightening this was. And if it seems like you all are busy, it's because you really, really are. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And plus one to all of that. I actually was going to say a similar comment. Councilmember Fields.
So back to performance measures. And this is, I'm nitpicking a little bit here, but I just want to make sure there's not a story behind it. I don't remember the chart, but there was one percentage of residents, or the number of residents served. And, and it drops off from 24,000 down to 18,000 at one point.
You're looking at the recreation one, correct? This one?
Yeah. Number of people served through recreation activities goes from 24,000 down to 18,000. What, what is that about? Why would that happen?
That's a great, that's a great question. I've had that question too. So it's because 2023 is our actual, and 2024 was just the target that we had set prior. So we were really looking still at what does it look like to recover and not have the full, fully operational Senior and Community Center. And so we had some pretty conservative estimates for that target. And since 2024 is not complete, we don't have that actual yet. So 23,958 would be our actual from '23. We don't have our actual for '24 yet, which is why you see that big drop off. I think we're anticipating it to pop up similar to what it was in 2023, which is why our target then for '25, '26 was closer to 25,000. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it's, it's an old target, is basically what you're saying.
Yes. Great. Perfect. Thanks.
So, but, and then just a nuance to that. You pointed out, and I agree, that the city is growing. And the percentage of people that we intend to serve, I think, I can't remember, I think it was 55%. So those targets in those out years would grow too, correct?
I think you're looking at a different performance measure slide. So can we go that, that one? So this is a different performance measure. So this is their geographical location.
Gotcha.
So this is us expanding our system versus the number of people we're serving.
Understand. And the only reason I even bring it up is as we grow, and, and I guess a lot of these programs pay for themselves, so it may be not be a major budget issue, but.
Yeah.
So, okay, I'm good. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Councilmember Salah Houdin.
Yeah, thank you. If we can actually go back to the initial slide that Councilmember Fields was referring to, specific to the number of people served in the recreation activities, and then even down below with the indoor versus outdoor facilities. Are there breakouts of, you know, age demographics? Like how many youth are we serving in the recreation activities? I know we're investing a lot in, say, the summer programs, and seeing that break out, to me, would be pretty valuable. And then also, you know, with, with how the climate is changing, looking at the indoor versus outdoor use of facilities, and it might not necessarily even need to be in the performance measures, but seeing that tracked would be really interesting as well.
So we do track both of those items. And actually, we come at the end of every summer, usually towards September or October, to bring kind of a summer recap to city council. But it usually includes data from a little bit further out as well. And so it actually really does break down, you know, how many youth did we serve over the summer? Where did those camps take place and things like that? So we're able to pull as much or as little of that data, and we really are working with our recreation team to tell that story more comprehensively. And so we'll make sure that when we come in the fall with that recreation update, that we include more of that information to show you.
That is perfect. Thank you. Looking forward to my first fall report.
Absolutely. Yeah.
It's one of my favorite reports that we get every year.
It's a fun one.
Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll hopefully let Director Hamilton go lie down a bit and feel better.
Thank you all. I'll be here in case there's any other questions.
And next up, we have Planning and Community Development, Director Helen presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Glad to be here this evening to be able to present Planning and Community Development overview. So with all of the Redmond 2050 materials you've been getting over the course of the last year and a half, I suspect you know a little bit about our mission. And one of the primary functions of Planning and Community Development is to prepare the Redmond's community vision, which is basically encapsulated in the comprehensive plan. Then the rest of our functions basically flow from that in promoting and implementing Redmond's community vision through the functions that are our responsibility. This is a brief list of the functions that we are responsible for. It basically breaks down into three basic lines of business. That includes planning, permitting inspection and code compliance, and homelessness, housing and human services. And that's delivered by 10 different divisions, and we support or support and facilitate the work of six boards and commissions. Our baseline budget offers, there are seven of them. They include, as Director Cochran noted earlier, our construction inspection offer is a cross-departmental offer. So it includes FTEs beyond those that are just housed in Planning and Community Development. Our community and economic development offer is our long-range planning and economic development and tourism staff. The development services offer, again, a cross-departmental offer that includes staff that are physically in the FTE allotments for authorizations for both fire and public works, but the majority of those staff are housed in Planning and Community Development. Then we have our housing and human services staff. One kind of noteworthy change in that area was the community care coordinator position that was added as a result of all of your conversations. We have Alina now here helping TESA, and they are a force to be reckoned with. They provide so much support, not just to our community, but our community partners that support vulnerable residents in Redmond. It's really quite an amazing thing to see. I also know that the other noteworthy change in our housing and human services budget was related to the per capita rate kind of catch-up provisions that, or proposal that Director Cochran presented to you, I think, at the last FAC meeting, where we reevaluated that formula and how it had been increased over time and got it to a place that seemed more consistent with our DEI goals and the objectives of that program. So that's where you do see a big jump in that forecasted budget. Our mobility of people and goods is our transportation planning and engineering folks, our transportation demand management and commute trip reduction. That program has been pretty stable. And then we have our two staffing agreements. One with Sound Transit for light rail construction and one with Microsoft for the construction of their Microsoft Refresh project. Those contracts are actually coming to a close. We do have light rail going operational at the final segment in 2025. And that construction staffing agreement and the staff associated with that will no longer be funded through this offer. And that work will migrate as you see other potential enhancements or other offers in the budget for next year to accommodate light rail operations and some of the work that we're doing with regard to our mobility grants and things like that. Wait, there was one more. Oh, the Microsoft Refresh Campus. The one that is actually ending mid-2025, and that will represent a staffing reduction as well. It will probably largely be through attrition and some other things. But the biggest amount in this budget offer is prepaid liabilities associated with inspections that still have yet to be completed. These are our performance measures. We have dashboard indicators relating to building code effectiveness grading schedule, which is a ICMA standard. And that has been one that we have met historically over time. Our percentages of inspections completed within 24 hours remains solid. We do have a good program for developers to call in, request an inspection, and get one within 24 hours. The percentages of cases resolved through forced compliance is, we would hope, to be zero. We are not in the business of penalizing people for violating the code. What we do seek to accomplish is voluntary compliance, because at the end of the day, we just want compliance. We don't want fees or fines associated with getting people in the place that they need to be. Many folks are maybe unaware of the rules and where it's appropriate. And they are aware of the rules, they're treated with a little bit firmer hand. But for the most part, we try to get to voluntary compliance. These dashboard indicators are related to business. They are mostly reflections of the numbers of businesses and things that we have, not really targets that we can control. So the number of active businesses in Redmond that have been that... I actually do not know why that says "N.A." through all of those. I can't explain that for more than seven years of time. I am sorry. I will email you and let you know later. With respect to job density compared to job growth targets, remember, our comprehensive plan requires us to include job targets and housing targets. And this basically describes our progress towards meeting those targets over time. Let's see. The measures with respect to dwelling units in urban centers are one related to where the densest parts of our city actually are, where infrastructure is the most robust and transportation services are also robust. So that's a measure that we try to have a certain percentage of our most dense development in our urban centers. That will likely change slightly with our new comprehensive plan update in future budget cycles, because we will be going to four centers as opposed to the three we currently have, or kind of two and a half that we currently have. And we will probably have a little bit different target adjustment, because middle housing is actually something that will affect this measure over time. We do also track the percentage of building and fire plan reviews that are completed with established timelines. As Chief noted earlier, this is an area of improvement for us. And if you'll recall, we do have a contractor on Contract Matrix. You approved that contract a couple of months ago. They are in the process of doing interviews with the directors, the mayor, the COO at this point in time, and will be doing staff interviews and be on-site in July to start looking for opportunities for streamlining our permit process and creating additional efficiencies and opportunities for improvement. We also have the number of site plan entitlements. This is another area. This area is pretty complicated. And we have varied performance based on our knowledge as well as the ability of the applicant. Sometimes the applicant skill can vary quite considerably. So sometimes we need to provide a lot more help. Sometimes applicants are a lot more savvy. The complexity of the buildings we're seeing is also increasing. We have dozens, more than a dozen manufacturers in Redmond, for instance, that produce satellites, and those are very difficult, complex buildings for our plan reviewers to review and inspect to ensure that they're safe. These final measures are, oh, these are affordable housing measures. These actually are consistent with the measures that are included in your community strategic plan. And our intention is to ensure that we have people housed appropriately. This percentage of outreach participants who are housed or maintain housing has always exceeded its target, another testament to TESA's solid performance in the area of housing people. If you remember from one of the last Thrive updates that we had, TESA housed 100 people last year. And it takes time, because there isn't necessarily housing available in the moment when someone needs it. And TESA works very hard to help individuals maybe get identification materials and develop a credit score and work over time to be in a position to move into housing when that housing becomes available, get stable jobs, demonstrate stability and the ability to pay rent so that they can be successful over time and remain housed once they're there. The final one, percentage of human services agency partners achieving one or more of their contracted outcome goals. Each of our human services grant fund recipients has contracted outcome goals that we measure and we track. And our human services team does that, and they have pretty good performance in that regard as well. Our last one is basically with respect to transportation. The speed at which we essentially build the transportation infrastructure that we need. Also concurrency, so delivery of transportation infrastructure in roughly the same timeframe as growth occurs. And then the percentage of Redmond commute trips using alternatives to single occupancy vehicles. That's one that we have tracked. You'll notice there has been a decline over time. There was quite the uptick during the pandemic of people mostly working from home and using alternative means to actually just work in alternative settings as opposed to necessarily commuting at all. That number has trailed off a bit, and we're hoping that that target will increase over time as our bike facilities and other pedestrian and wheeled facilities improve. We did have several one-time enhancements. We had, I think, seven of them for Planning and Community Development. We did have our human services grant funding, which is tracked every year, that we anticipate to have full expenditure consistent with the council-approved grant funds that were recommended by the Human Services Commission by the end of the year. So that will be completed. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee support was the funding that came from the American Rescue Plan Act to provide support to LTAC. That actually was helpful in the, some of the small business support... Oops, I'm sorry. In some of the one-time enhancements that I'm going to talk about on the next slide. The one, let's see. Oh, yes, sorry. The One Redmond Contract Administration, that one was the $500,000 of small business grants. So with that, we provided $500,000 to One Redmond. They administered that program. This was the administrative support for that program. Over 100 Redmond businesses received $5,000 each through that program, and that program is complete. The Redmond 2050 update included several elements. It had the economic analysis of the incentive program for Overlake, which we have completed. And that also informed the Planning Commission recommendation that the city council reviewed earlier this year to recalibrate the inclusionary zoning provisions. Similar analyses are underway right now for Downtown and Marymore Village, and those will be completed by the end of the year. This also included the Equitable and Inclusive Community Engagement Contract that we had with East Side For All. And then for Redmond 2050 in general, all the plan elements and the regulations for Overlake and the residential areas will be done by the end of the year. We will still have Downtown, Marymore, and the Mixed Use Zone regulations that will follow up in the beginning of 2025, together with the publishing of a formatted and copy-edited plan document. All right, small business support. This was the ARPA funding that had several different components. It had the $500,000 of direct grants to small businesses that I referred to earlier that we had the administrative support for. It also included $60,000 for our first Economic Development Strategic Plan that is working its way to council for final approval. And it had $160,000 for community-based organization and language support for small business recovery and resiliency. And that also helped support some facilitation of a Overlake Village Small Business Hub concept at the Bellwether Project and Translation and Trusted Delivery Program Services. The final bit of that $740,000 was spent to, was $20,000 that was spent to promote diverse businesses in their recovery, which will actually help us build on the themes included in the Redmond 2050 plan for the Overlake Intercultural District. The Transportation Master Plan is one that will be coming back to you and is in progress. The completion is anticipated in Q2 of 2025. We're updating the Impact Fee Program. We're developing the interactive web map and several other features, some of which will come to you this year and are informing the comprehensive plan update, others that will be completed at the beginning of next year, because they are part of the TMP but not directly needed to be included in the comprehensive plan. And then finally, we had the Washington State Department of Commerce Middle Housing Grant that was used by the long-range planning team to do a middle housing and racially disparate impacts analysis. That was required under the terms of the countywide planning policies and the Affordable Housing Committee requirements for adoption of a housing, our housing element of our comprehensive plan, and that is complete. So moving on to the challenges for our next budget year. Housing demand and affordability continues to be a challenge that we are planning for and will be watching closely. As you know, we have recommended inclusionary zoning provisions for Overlake. More will be coming for Marymore and for Downtown. But we will be watching the performance of those regulations closely over time to make sure that they are not slowing development in a way that is contraindicated to the outcomes that we're trying to achieve to build more housing faster for the people that need it in Redmond. We are also experiencing the, some of the effects of the ARPA fund sunsetting. So, and actually, the eviction moratorium. So some of our nonprofits are struggling with a tremendous amount of unrecoverable debt associated with failure to pay rent. And those, some of those nonprofits are struggling to keep their housing sustainable at this point in time. Major, we do have major zoning code and legislative changes that we've been responding to in our comprehensive plan update in Redmond 2050, which you know about. But we have also been working on middle housing, which extends like as a cross-departmental, cross-city initiative to ensure that we have regulations in place that address the infrastructure needs for that housing type and also remove barriers for that housing type by updating our regulations to be more city-specific rather than kind of suburban-specific. So that's a big undertaking, not just for Planning and Community Development, but for our partners and other departments who are really helping us accomplish that work. We do have a public defender case ratio issue that we're following closely. The Washington State Bar Association has recommended that public defenders' caseloads are far too heavy and has recommended a reduction in the amount of, the number of cases that they were, are permitted to take in any particular year, and also based on the complexity of those cases. And that could have a relatively significant impact on our budget for the defender program. We are required to have public defenders by state law and under the Constitution. And then state changes to mandates for timelines are also a large issue. And in both the housing demand piece and the timelines piece, that Matrix Consulting contract, we believe, is going to provide some recommendations that will help us streamline, so build more housing faster, and then address the timeline mandates that the state has imposed for us to review permits and get out decisions to our applicants. We, at the same time, as we're driving the car, we're changing the tires. And so we are looking at intergov permitting and platform processes. You'll remember in the budget for this year that there was approved in B-TIP a $700,000 investment for potential replacement for intergov. We are in a place where we are testing, doing a proof of concept on updating intergov with the current vendor, with the current... intergov with the current vendor, with the current, um, application. We are also looking at other opportunities. Uh, our client, our permitting clients have not been completely thrilled with our front-end portal, and the backend product, intergov, doesn't really give us the information we need to monitor permitting as the state requires now under its timeline, uh, legislation. So, more to come on that. We'll see if we stick with our existing horse or if we move to a new one. GIS and data analytics become, continues to be an issue for us because you can't know what you can't measure, and so we will be working hard to, um, continue to collect information and data on our performance and measure it over time because we know that's not just important to council, it's important to our applicants, it creates predictability for them and helps them understand kind of how long things will take and how long, uh, carrying costs of land will be when they're, um, undertaking projects here in Redmond. And then just, um, the overall, um, requirements of us planning appropriately to meet growth demands that impact transportation, human services, and small businesses. You all have been involved in much of that when you approved some of the, um, one-time projects that we did in this biennium. There will be more to come as we transition to, from construction of light rail to operation of light rail. Those will create, um, new opportunities and new challenges that we're excited about in the new biennium, but also will create, uh, challenges for us as well. So I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much. And for the listening public, if you didn't take note at that first slide, there's a lot that falls under this department, and I think it cuts across all of our different budget priorities, uh, as well. Um, so, so a lot to cover there. Council members, I'll just note for the sake of time, I think, um, there's a lot of metrics included in this one as well as some of the, the following ones, uh, and I think we can schedule more time to go deeper on, on the metrics as well, but if you have burning questions, please ask them at this time. Councilmember Fields.
Uh, I might suggest to the finance director that when we do get to the budget, this one should be front and center so that we're not so tired at the end. There is a lot here. So I had a couple of questions. I'm not going to ask any of them because you, my brain totally tilted out at intergov.
Oh, uh, sorry.
And, uh, that is fairly concerning. Um, I was, one of the questions that I was going to ask is if, when we do get the budget, that you could identify those measurements that we expect to improve because of the successful implementation of intergov? But now, we may not be seeing that in the timeframe that we hoped. That's really...
Well, um, intergov, we are looking at ways to pull the information we need, and the state, State Department of Commerce is trying to help put reporting standards together that we will all feed information into. The requirement for us to start reporting starts, started this year, so we are doing that by hand. The requirement to start measuring and actually reporting against performance and potentially having to do refunds if we don't put certain plans in place, uh, will start next year. It doesn't mean we can't get the information, it's just labor-intensive now. So we want to make sure that we have a program that actually matches what the state has said we are required to track over time. Um, we could develop that internally. We are in the process of seeing proof of concept whether intergov can supply that, and our TIS director is also participating on a group, uh, two groups. One, a state-run group, one, one of a consortium of jurisdictions that is exploring creating their own platform. So there may be some, um, kind of transition pain points right now, but we can collect the data we need, it just isn't very efficient at this point in time.
Maybe then, uh, Director, I can ask this question, or ask this, make this request this way. On those, um, metrics, dashboard metrics where either intergov, um, helps or in fact doesn't meet the expectations that we expected, if you could just note, uh, when we get the budget or at least provide me some sort of sense that here's the benefits we're not going to get, or these are the benefits we will get.
I'm hopeful that that will be done. Um, the proof of content, concept is anticipated to be done at the end of the year, so that will likely be a continuing conversation and, um, but that would be information we...
But metrics are, you're predicting, so...
Correct. Thanks.
Thanks.
Other questions? All right, thank you so much, Director Helen. We'll look forward to getting more details in the time to come. Next up, we have our police chief, Daryl Lowe.
Good evening. I promise not to tilt you guys out. The police department is, uh, pretty succinct and direct. So our mission to provide the community with the law enforcement services consistent, um, with our core values of respect, professionalism, dedication, and leadership. Uh, our department is broken down into five sections, patrol, criminal investigations, uh, support, and outreach. In our baseline budget, uh, what you see here is a, uh, increase primarily driven by contractual obligations, COLA salaries, et cetera. Uh, in our performance measures, um, consistent with, uh, what we expect, obviously 2024 is, um, halfway through the year. Um, I don't have any concerns about where we'll end up, uh, at year's end. Uh, what I will say is, uh, on that first indicator, uh, that will be changing, uh, moving forward because of a change in how, uh, crime actually gets reported, uh, both on a state and a national level. Uh, same thing with, uh, the, uh, measures related to, uh, response times and call for service, uh, all consistent and, uh, with what we expect and as far as our performance. And then in the, uh, one-time enhancements, uh, in the emergency response, that, uh, particular figure there represents the, um, uh, mobile command vehicle, uh, that was, uh, approved, uh, for replacement. Uh, and then the other was the, uh, right sizing, uh, or addition of, uh, two vehicles, uh, for our fleet, and that was, uh, around, uh, the vehicle for our PIO and investigators. Uh, back one more, I thought I had one more. Oh, nope. Okay. Um, yeah, in that, uh, I'm sorry, so in that, uh, that top line, that 597,000, that represented, uh, the mobile command vehicle, it also represented the, uh, breaching kits and, uh, bleed kits, uh, that were installed in the, uh, various, uh, city facilities, and those were, uh, one-time enhancements, uh, to that, uh, baseline. Uh, for our challenges, as far as from a, a budget perspective, um, the increased cost with compliance, uh, technology, maintenance, and support, as was talked about earlier, uh, there's been a change overall with, uh, how that is done from a technology perspective. Uh, some of those things have been maintained, uh, by TIS. Uh, public records requests, we're seeing, uh, uh, impact on that just with the sheer number of, uh, public records requests that are, uh, coming into the police department, uh, to include, uh, body worn camera footage and a lot of requests that are requesting, uh, any and everything going back, uh, significant, uh, periods of time. Uh, we've talked consistently about the recruiting and hiring challenges that exist, uh, just within the workforce in general, but within, uh, law enforcement specifically. Uh, the complexity of our criminal investigative cases, uh, every case that we have now has, uh, you know, uh, at least a phone or a computer, and that's, uh, both time and labor-intensive portions of the investigation. Uh, and the ma, uh, majority of the individuals that we come in contact with have either, uh, mental health or substance use disorders, which, um, uh, also have an impact, and that's reflected, uh, in our jail costs, uh, because those, uh, particular, uh, beds, uh, cost more for the additional service that's being provided, um, by SCORE. Uh, and then the increased legislative requirements, uh, for training, um, as we track both in, uh, this budget and this upcoming budget with the, uh, back and forth, uh, with the various state laws that requires, uh, training and retraining, which, uh, impacts our costs, uh, specifically around, uh, overtime because we have to take officers out of service, uh, you know, for those particular trainings or backfill, uh, while those, uh, trainings occur. Uh, and then I mentioned previously, uh, the, uh, increase, uh, in jail costs. Uh, and with that, what we saw, uh, through the COVID, uh, period, we had, uh, costs for the jail, but, uh, they were not charging, uh, the full amount. What they have since started charging, uh, the full amount, uh, for those actual beds, uh, and that enhanced, uh, service. Uh, and then we are in conversation right now with, uh, Kirkland. Uh, Kirkland has a jail facility, they are accepting outside contracts, so we are, uh, in the process right now of, um, working out the language and, and numbers with them, and I would anticipate bringing that forward. Not necessarily part of the budget process, but coming forward, we will have two options, uh, as relates, uh, to, uh, jail beds. Uh, with that, I'll take, uh, any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chief Lowe. Other questions? Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks so much. I would really encourage, um, some, some time and attention on the dashboard indicator, um, that on our version is slide 76. Oh, it's this one, yes, the very top one here. Um, so by conflating, um, violent and property crimes, I actually think it's telling us a lot less than it could. We know that violent crimes per capita in Redmond are far lower, uh, than the property crimes that folks do experience to some degree in our city. Um, this is also one of the performance indic, only one of the performance indicators that we're, we're really seeing things off-track a, a little bit. So, um, it would be great if we have the data to be able to tell this story differently to our community. I, um, I think especially in a moment where a, a certain rhetoric around crime, um, is occurring, this is, this is a spot that I, I tend to, to really spend time helping folks understand the difference between a property crime committed by someone who doesn't live in Redmond coming to our community, um, and some of the other things that are conflated in this number. So would love to see some, some reworking of, of this, um, so that we can tell our story better. Thanks.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Forsythe.
Thank you, and thank you for addressing the Kirkland, uh, jail situation because that was one of my questions, and you, you got it before I got there. So, only other question I had was you'd mentioned, um, there's going to be some difference in crime reporting for state and national level. Can you just kind of tell us a little more about that? I appreciate your brevity, but want to let, know a little more.
Uh, so previously, uh, we did what was known as, uh, UCR, which was, uh, universal crime reporting. Uh, now the new standard is, uh, NIBR, is a national incident-based reporting system. Uh, so it's just a, a change in how we report our numbers, both to the, uh, state, uh, and to the feds. Uh, so to, uh, Councilmember Stewart's point, um, the, the way this, uh, metric is, it currently reads and it currently captures the crime, it's only taking two parts of what are known as, uh, Group A offenses, which are violent crimes, property crimes, and quality-of-life crimes. Uh, the, this current metric does not include those, so it's, it's incorrect, uh, just in that sense because it excludes a, a third of those particular crimes, and then this metric is based on, uh, per thousand residents. So if you actually do the math, this comes out to 3,880 crimes. Uh, we actually had 4,300, uh, ish, uh, total, uh, of those Group A crimes. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, uh, but that is for, uh, this current budget cycle. Moving forward, the new metric will more accurately reflect, uh, both how we report crimes and how that, uh, information is captured. So to Councilmember Stewart's point, it will, uh, tell the story, um, more clearly and more accurately because it will truly reflect, uh, what is captioned in that category.
Is there anything within our current dashboard system that needs to be updated to match that similar reporting accuracy?
No, so that, I'll say this is disparate in a sense of this here is part of, uh, an internal document, but the actual dashboard that, uh, we have up and running that, uh, is available to the public, uh, that is current and correct and reflects, and reflects the correct data points.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sela Houdin.
Uh, my question was the exact same as, uh, Council Vice President Forsythe and Councilmember Stewart, um, just as a clarification for those, that third group, um, is that considered crimes against society or is that...
Yes. Yes, uh, it's broadly categorized as crimes against society, but people, the, uh, layman's terms is, uh, quality-of-life issues.
Councilmember Fields.
So one of the, uh, conferences that I attended last week, uh, at AWC was what every good elected representative should know about fentanyl. And I was, um, pretty surprised, even though I felt like I knew this, uh, the, the, the increase is almost exponential in deaths, uh, in King County nationwide. Uh, you hinted a little bit about, um, almost every crime has a relation to drug. You said something, um, to that effect. I know, um, you know, back to measurements, is there any way to actually understand this problem in Redmond with data and statistics so that we know how to, how to better address it?
It, it's not a straight yes or no, uh, without making it too, uh, I'll say complicated or convoluted. Um, yes, when we have a, uh, direct indication, uh, you know, of fentanyl or of drug usage, or we have a, uh, call it a fentanyl save, then yes, um, that's a bit easier. Uh, in other circumstances, uh, no, because the way the system is structured, individuals are not, uh, remanded in custody long enough for, uh, the, the pre-child assessments to occur such that we really know what, uh, what services they need or what's really going on. So if it's not, uh, specifically drug-related at the time of our contact or interaction, uh, we really don't have a, a backend follow-up, uh, mechanism for that, uh, that would truly give us the impact. It, it's, it's just anecdotal.
Thank you. I'm not seeing other questions. I'll just note, I, I do think, um, for when we have more conversation on performance measures, given the work that we're doing on the Thrive Program and the, the work of, uh, within your department, um, on that, that it would be interesting to have a related metric to, to the work around, um, support, uh, for mental health, um, calls and, and perhaps especially to track our MHP's work, um, as well as our, um, community care coordinator that's embedded within the police department. If there are no other questions, then we'll move on to the next one. Thank you so much, Chief Lowe. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Public Works, and we have our Public Works Director, Aaron Burt, here to present.
Good evening, councilmembers. Aaron Burt, Public Works Director. Our mission statement. Next slide. So the overview of the department, uh, within traffic and streets, that's everything from traffic operations and engineering to street operations and maintenance. Focus on construction services, that's our right-away management, capital delivery, and then with utilities, that's the catch-all. Everything from engineering to, um, planning, to maintenance and operations on a day-to-day basis. Next slide. Our enhanced, uh, baseline budget offers for '25, '26. The major cost driver that we are going to be facing, excuse me, is an increase in rates that we have to pay to Cascade Water Alliance. We have a further in-depth discussion on those rate increases that we're going to be facing as a utility as a whole, that we can provide at a later date. But it is, uh, driving our, our major costs. Additionally, on the second slide, we are going to have an increase in some of our vehicle fleet costs, even though, uh, we do have a fleet study that we finally got back, uh, that I'll be presenting to council here shortly, uh, but we are anticipating some higher costs relating to vehicle replacement. There's been a backlog in vehicle, um, replacement that we're going to have to fund going forward. For our staffing allocation, about 141 FTEs, about 12 of those, 13 of those are seasonal employees that we, um, bring into our utility and maintenance operations during the summertime. Next slide. I have, uh, six pages of performance measures. I'm not going to go through each of those individually, happy to answer any questions on those at the end. I will say I'm going to buck the trend a little bit. Um, we do a really good job of counting things, um, but I don't know if we do a good job of measuring the measures of effectiveness on whether or not we're, we're doing the right things. It is something that, uh, me and my management team have been talking about, about how we can take a closer look at this going forward, focus more on the measures of effectiveness versus the measures of performance. Um, so something that we'll probably be looking to revise in the next year, year and a half going forward. In terms of budget enhancements for '23, '24, uh, across the board, we are on track, uh, to complete, uh, all these on time, about 95% of them. One of the things that we, uh, have faced in terms of, uh, what we had asked for in terms of the budget enhancements for this past biennium, a lot of plans and studies, uh, that can take some time to put together, to get the RFPs together, get them out, get the consultants on board, do the data gathering, and then, uh, drop the conclusions. But we're not really seeing anything, uh, major, uh, that will derail any of these efforts or endeavors that we're undertaking here in this biennium. And then our budget challenges at the end. Obviously, um, Redmond continues to grow, we're building a lot of new infrastructure, but we need to address and, uh, have some honest conversations about our aging infrastructure, especially our pipes, everything from wastewater to, uh, water distribution. Um, we do have a, uh, new asset manager, uh, onboard, and we are doing that comprehensive li- We do have a new asset manager onboard, and we are doing that comprehensive look at our assets. With many of the plans that we are developing right now, wastewater, water system plan, we're going to have some better data and understanding really of the conditions of our pipes and where our system is at. And then we'll be looking to come back at a later date with basically a plan on how to address this, but it's not going to be cheap. And those are those decisions that we're going to have to make long-term in capital investment on what we want to put our limited dollars towards. Capital delivery, this continues to be somewhat of a challenge. We've had some turnover in staffing. We've gone through some reorganizations. We've gone through some reorganizations as relates to processes and procedures. We're coming out of a challenged capital environment in terms of bidding. Costs have begun to stabilize for the supply chain and materials that we're able to find. And actually, we are finding that we're coming into somewhat of a competitive bidding environment where commercial construction, home construction is beginning to lag, and these government projects look a little more appealing to some of these contractors out there. So many of the bids that we have and the projects that we're looking to take into, for example, this year's construction season, are coming out very favorably for us. And then the other final point that I alluded to is we have many system plans that we are developing right now. And then the question will be, how do we take these plans and the information contained within and actually construct some actionable items on it? In the past, in reviewing many of the system plans, when I first got onboard, we had pages and pages of great ideas and projects and so forth, but the implementation of those plans previously probably were not up to where we needed to be. So we're going to be taking a very hard look at the outcomes of these plans and actually driving those recommendations into actionable work programs and implementation for us moving forward. Pending your questions.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Hi, Director Burke. On, it's our Slide 91, so it's just before, it's on measures, performance measures, vibrant and connected. One of the lines, it says percentage of capital projects completed at or under budget. For '21, '22, and '23, we've seen a slight upward trend by 1% to 2%, but then we're targeting for that to decrease, to actually go down from 91% expected for 2024 down to 85%. And then for 2025 and '26 to go down to 80%. I don't understand.
Sure. So many of the projects that we're dealing with right now are complicated and carryover projects, basically what I'd call legacy projects that may be in the hopper for three, four, or five years. And as scopes have changed and kind of the outcomes of those original projects have changed, have driven some of the cost increases on that. So we're just trying to be realistic as it relates to what we're putting forward in terms of what we can bring in under budget. It is also, we're recognized that we need to do better in terms of our cost estimation process. Often, we're very conservative in estimating project costs, but when I say we're conservative, so we put a lot of money towards it, when we put a project forward, we don't always have the full scope defined. And so as you get into the project scoping process, you begin to uncover other issues that you can tackle or other incidences that are going to drive costs. And so that has, in the past, led to higher costs on projects.
So then am I reading that incorrect, that for this year, we had 91% that were completed at or under budget, but we're expecting that to?
I will imagine as we finish out '24, we'll have a couple of projects that will come in a bit higher.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Salah Houdin.
Yeah. Can we go to the second baseline budget offer slide? And hopefully this is a quick question. Could you touch base on the department reorganization on the capital investment delivery? I think the next slide. Yeah.
Actually, I don't know why that note is in there, but I'll figure it out.
Yeah, thank you.
I've been gone for the past three weeks while they put together this slide deck, so my apologies.
No, appreciate it.
Councilmember Stewart.
I had the same question. Thanks.
I think actually, part of that, though, just like many of the other departments we've dealt with, is just regular cost increases and salaries and benefits. And we did add, you know, for example, an asset manager position as well, which is a cost driver there. So I'll get a breakdown for you on that.
Yeah, if you get more insight, if you want to email it, follow up, that'd be great. Councilmember Stewart, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, just a follow up on that. I guess one more layer I would add, because it is a seven-figure, about $1.1 million increase. And we have heard, we've heard you characterize the department as having had some turnover. We know there's been some key retirements and things like that. So actually, if this is about staffing, I'd love to hear like the impact of that, not just like what it costs, but like what the department is getting as a result of that reorganization and how the residents are benefiting. That's just a piece of the story we can't quite tease out here.
Sure.
Thanks.
Other questions? Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, I just want to comment on your comments about measurements, and I agree completely. The purpose of measurements is to make us better, not to show how good we are. If we fall into that trap of trying to create a narrative and show how successful we are, we degrade our success over time. So I am fully appreciative and support that we would do better. And even to the issue of budget, if I see, whenever I see a statistic that says we're never overbudgeted, then I get concerned that people are overbudgeting. So I appreciate all of that. And I would think that getting the right, especially in your area, and you mentioned things are settling down with our suppliers and vendors, and I would think that having good measurements could actually drive some of those actionable, identification of good actionable things to do to improve this. And I'm finally to a question. I talked with the finance director a couple of times about evaluating our contracting methods. Are you involved in that, or is your department involved in that?
Yeah, a couple of things that we're doing on that. Number one is, I was really surprised when I came onboard that City Redmond did not use the job order contracting method that is available through the state. So we are implementing that here this year, getting on that job contract that will be able to, I think, reduce costs, especially if we need a one-time consultant or small-scale public works, you know, support on projects, or even to get some small-scale items done, being able to leverage that contract. The second thing that we're doing is this year, we're reevaluating all our on-call contracts that we have that support not only the capital division, but, you know, the consultancy architects, the engineers, the environmental organizations that support much of our work. I think in the past, it has been a crutch that the department has just defaulted to some of these same firms, which has not resulted in competitive costing or bidding for us on these contracts for this type of support. So we will be redoing all our RFPs and going out for a competitive bidding for those types of contracts. But then also, kind of the larger scale with finance, I know that that effort is beginning, and we'll definitely have a hand in it because we are a huge cost driver or spender for the city.
Right, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing other questions. I'll just make a quick note. From my perspective, I think some of the measures that jumped out to me in particular were around community-wide solid waste diversion. And just curious, is, in terms of the numbers, you know, we're going to be implementing the CND, Construction and Demolition Waste Diversion Strategies, which I understood would have a big, a significant change. So I just am wondering on the targets there for where we're going. And then similarly, just seeing the drop actually in the number of businesses and multifamily complexes participating in organics recycling, which I think means composting. So I think, glad to see those higher numbers as the goals, but it doesn't look like we're trending in the best direction, so something for us to think about as we move forward.
Sure.
Great. All right, well, that brings us, we are running a bit long on this one, but we are going to, I think, finish this out. So it brings us to our last department, which is Technology and Information Services. And here we have our TIS Director, Mike Marshand.
Save the best for last. Good evening, everybody. All right, so our mission statement, together we empower a connected community. TIS is divided into six separate teams. Our customer care group is our help desk, our front-facing group of TIS. Infrastructure operations takes care of our network and server infrastructure. Security and compliance, they keep us safe and send us phishing simulation emails. GIS and EDM, that's our, you know, the folks who put together our maps and manage all of our databases. Project Management and Business Solutions takes care of all of our enterprise applications. Our baseline offer, so just one line on this one, substantial increase here, but this is, as Director Cochrane had addressed earlier, largely due to moving software subscriptions into TIS. So we're consolidating all of the different software subscriptions, licenses within TIS's budget, along with cell phone and, you know, our Microsoft licenses. As we're operationalizing a lot of our projects, D365, the licenses that were paid for out of budgets or out of project budgets are coming into our operational budget. Performance measures, so a couple of performance measures we have in here, sorry, I can't see the screen from there. So, you know, I'll just say briefly that I don't think this really illustrates a lot of the great work that we do in TIS. These are the two that we've sort of inherited and haven't had a chance to add on to. Very important metrics, you know, the percentage of staff who complete our security awareness training, great number there, we're holding steady at the 90%. This is really, in my opinion, sort of the foundation of our security posture, because a lot of the threats that we hear come from basically people clicking on the wrong things. So, you know, we can have a really solid, well-built security infrastructure, firewalls and intrusion detection and all these sorts of things, but it just takes one user to click on the wrong link in an email. So great that there, we've got good compliance on their training. And our service requests, you know, we're holding at 82%, projecting to go to 85%. Making sure that we address those issues within our, sort of our published service-level agreement, which is essentially if it's a hair on fire, everything's burning down, we respond within, you know, five minutes, 10 minutes with a target resolution time of a couple hours. If it's a day-to-day thing affecting one person, then there's a little bit longer SLA. So that's what those two essentially cover. And then as far as budget challenges, you know, these two, cost of technology, it's interesting, the dynamic, it used to be as technology gets more advanced, it would become less expensive. You know, we've kind of had a bit of a paradigm shift, that is, as becoming more advanced, vendors, manufacturers are figuring out ways to make it more expensive. So one example is, you know, the transition to cloud. So a lot of times in the past, you would have more like a capital expense, you'd buy a license, you'd buy some hardware, you could amortize it over a number of years. You know, it was sort of one-time expenses you repeat over five, six years. Now with subscriptions, it's an ongoing expense, it ends up costing considerably more. There's lots of advantages to it. You get a lot of advantages over the traditional method, but it is more expensive. And then technology adoption, there's sort of two sides to this coin. One side of it is, you know, there is a very strong desire for more technology. There's, you know, departments, you've heard TIS mentioned a number of times from other departments, everybody needs more technology, we need more reporting, we need more data. Flip side of that one is, when you adopt new technologies, there is often changes required in business processes. So you bring on a new platform, D365, our UKG for HR, and it's never a one-size-fits-all. So it's, you bring in a new platform and business processes need to change, or you need to figure out ways to customize the technology to make it fit your business processes. So number of challenges, both sides, as far as technology adoptions.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Fields.
So I'm sure every council member has their favorite department or favorite something. I just want to take a second and say customer service in the technology department is my favorite. They're nice, they're quick, they're responsive, they're patient. Every time I've ever interacted with them, they're great. I just wanted to always say that. The other question is, are we doing anything with AI? I know it's the hot new topic, but are we, to your technology adoption?
Yeah, so first, thank you very much. That's, you know, that's fantastic. We love to hear that, and I know we're very fortunate that we've got a wonderful customer care team. Well, as far as AI, absolutely, you know, we're spending a lot of time looking at different AI solutions. Sneak peek, one of the things that we're bringing forward as far as our, one of our budget proposals for, based on our, to support equity, is an AI-based real-time language translation device. So we've got three or four of them that we're piloting and doing some testing on right now, but essentially it can take spoken speech, translated, real-time, spoken outwards again, or it text, and uses AI to do an amazing job contextualizing speech. So for example, in English, you might say, I'm going to quit this cold turkey. Well, you're not talking about refrigerated poultry, right? You're talking about, I want to quit this immediately. So it can pick up on those sorts of things and get the correct translations. So yeah, that's one example. You know, we're also looking at different ways to potentially build or focus a team on looking at innovative ways to do technology. That'll be one of our BTO projects that comes up, so.
Councilmember Salah Houdin.
Yep, thank you. And I know, just to follow up on that question, you and I have had a conversation specific to a chatbot that the City of Bellevue is piloting, so just throwing that, you know, for the listening audience, just opportunities where we can diversify the way that our residents are reaching out and engaging with the city. My, I guess it's not really a specific question, but when we're looking at, you know, the performance measures that your team will assess and consider perhaps moving forward, if there is any opportunity for specifically the technology adoption with all of the software going under your, under this budget item, looking at, you know, whether there's recurring training specifically for the technology or software and seeing whether or not we can implement that as a part of the measures to make sure all of our staff and agencies are, you know, using the software in the intended ways to boost our performance.
Absolutely. You know, there's a number, we've got a worksheet of different metrics that we're looking at, and that's absolutely within the scope of some of those, so thank you.
Other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, and I would just love to say thank you so much to all of our department directors, to our finance staff for the hard work on preparing our budget, as well as also to our directors and staff for achieving the work and goals from our past budget. It's great to see a lot of that information in here tonight and look forward to more of the conversation. For everyone who's listening, I hope that you enjoy getting some deep dive on the things that your tax dollars go towards. A lot of it's right here in the baseline, even though we'll also be following up with a lot of discussions about additions and subtractions and all of those pieces when we get to the budget process this fall. And I'll pass that back to Director Cochrane in case you have any final words to say.
Just want to say thank you for your attention, for your engagement, for your feedback. I appreciate having the opportunity to share the information that we have ahead of time and understand where there are areas that we maybe need to pivot for council. I really appreciate the interest in performance measures, and I'll work with council leadership on a path forward for us there, definitely.
Great, thank you so much. And with that, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll also allow our mayor to step out before the next item. Thanks. I'll be back at 9:15. Thanks, I'll be back at 9:15. I call this meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is the 2024 Process for Updating Council Benefits and the Mayor's Salary. Kathryn Laird, Human Resources Director, will introduce this item. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, President Quitzer. So, I'm Kathryn Laird, your HR Director, and Melissa Files is here with me as well. And tonight, we're going to discuss with you two separate topics. First, we're going to talk about the mayor's salary. And once that is done, then we will move to discussing council benefits. So, what I need from you is, I'm seeking final decision today on the mayor's salary and council benefits, so we can move to council consent, looking at that in November, on November 4th. So, for the mayor's salary discussion, there are four key areas that we're looking to have a decision on. One is on the mayor's base salary, one is on car allowance, one is on CPIW, or also known as COLA increases, and then the last, of course, is the effective date. So, what we're going to do is provide you a recommendation for each of these key decisions and then allow time for discussion. So, we're going to start with the base salary. And as a reminder, the mayor's base salary is currently right now at $145,000, which was last updated on January 1st of 2020. So, our recommendation is based on internal equity, and it is to increase the mayor's salary to match the top of the directors of the executive EX15 pay band, which is at $228,168. The EX pay plan includes the Chief Information Officer and the Finance, HR, Parks, and Planning Directors. So, it's important to separate the who in the role from the actual requirements of the job. So, the mayor's role is the chief, is she, the mayor acts as the Chief Executive Officer, the top position with the most accountability for the successful management of city services. The CEO has hiring and firing authority, is accountable for strategic implementation of council legislation, and ensures the efficient and successful operations of a city services based upon identified strategies, visions, and goals. There is a high degree of liability of decisions that must be considered by considering internal policy, external laws, and other compliance requirements. And again, this is an internal equity recommendation.
Thank you, are you hoping for feedback from council members on this?
Yes, that would be great.
I guess I would ask you as well, we did have an attachment in our packet that was about the council's last discussion on this. And just for the listening public, we also received information on the median salaries or on the different salaries of comparable cities, and then what the median salary was at that time, as well as there's another attachment, what it would be at this time. So, if you could speak to what the council actually had been planning to move to consent last year, I think that would be helpful as well for context.
Correct, okay, that sounds good. So, the council did discuss salary, and they ended up discussing and moving to a flat rate of $170,000 for the first year with an increase of $5,000 to $175,000 for the second year. So, the first year would have been in 2024, and then the second year would have been $175,000. There was various discussions around how that, how they came up with that amount, but that was the amount that was decided upon.
Great, thank you very much. And I will say, I think for the council members that weren't here at the time, you can see in that document, you know, we looked at some of the median salaries of comparable cities, looking at average CPIW increases, and chose a number closer to those numbers at that time. It's a little confusing in this because it says 25 and 26, but I think it was supposed to be 24, 25 as the steps at that time. But this would be if we kept those as options.
Yes.
25 and 26, because it would probably be going for next year. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, it felt like we did more than discuss. It felt like we actually made a vote and made a council decision, and then it didn't get implemented for some reason. But isn't that more accurate, that we actually voted on it?
Yes, that was the decision. So, the council, as noted in our materials, we, the council approved to move to consent the $170,000, one year followed by the $175,000. I think it got pulled because the council's salary work wasn't able to be completed. And so, the mayor felt that she shouldn't, that we shouldn't make a change also as well on that, as well as council leadership at the time brought up, that we should probably wait and do the processes concurrently. So, we didn't vote on it at that time.
So, the mayor pulled it from consent, or the council pulled it from consent?
Council leadership and the mayor discussed it and ultimately decided at the time that we didn't bring it, it didn't go on the agenda at all. It wasn't pulled from consent at any time.
Okay, thanks.
But it was recommended for us to vote on. Council Vice President Forsyth, I don't know if you have additional comments on that?
Yeah, so, we did, we did all, that version of council did agree upon the $175,000 for 2024, $175,000 for 2025, plus the retaining the car allowance of $500 a month. And I think there was another benefit as well, I'm not recalling.
I think that was it, those two.
Was that it?
Mm-hmm.
And per the language of the ordinance and per the prior council leadership and mayor discussions, both the council salary and the mayor's salary were to be voted on at the same time. But since that was not able to happen due to incompletion of the salary commissions' ability to do their work, the decision was made to hold off on the mayor's salary as well. Does that answer your question?
Well, it, my concern, I guess, is for another day. It, I'm not sure about the process of council leadership pulling something that the full council had agreed on. So, that strikes me as odd, and I'm not sure I like the idea or setting the precedent that council leadership has that kind of authority. However, to your other part of your point made, that if it's incomplete ordinance as intended, then I guess I'm not going to argue that, but, you know, it's another discussion for another day.
Thank you for making that point. I, yeah, I will note, there was a lot going on around salaries at that time to consider. Councilmember Stewart?
I agree with Councilmember Fields, and if items in the future that the council sends to consent don't make it there, then I believe there's some communication needed so that the council can make a decision. So, thank you, Councilmember Fields. I just want to clarify with the staff one thing. So, we can see here the work that we did last year, and we'll obviously need our new teammates to weigh in on their thoughts on that. But just to be clear, because I was actually, this memo, this packet is a little bit difficult. So, just to track where everything is, so I'm on page 106 of the full agenda packet, and it lists the, during the April 11th, 2023 study session, and it has that staff recommendation of the $215,256. I think what I heard you propose tonight is that exact same number a year later, is that correct?
Correct, yes. So, what we're, what we, the reason why we proposed it then and we're proposing it now is because it's looking at internal equity rather than external market data. So, what ended up happening is the council moved forward by looking only at external data and not internal data. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Councilmember Noe Pukamina?
Thank you. Taking a look at what council had previously approved for $170,000 for 2025, $175,000 for 2026, that's roughly 3%. Was that approved for a type of inflation COLA? Since it's right around 3% and that tends to be the average?
Yes, probably. As I recall, it was more basically $170,000, and then somebody said, "And let's give an additional 5,000." So, I don't think it was based on a specific number. They just decided to increase it to $175,000 for the second year.
With what justification?
Well, there was, there was extensive conversation around, they, we looked at COLAs from the past, we looked at the market data, there was a whole bunch of information that council had talked about, and then they landed on those numbers, so.
Okay.
I'd also add that I think there was discussion at the time about, you know, I think there's definitely an argument to be made around the executive having the top salary of all of the employees. At the same time, our mayor is an executive who is an elected official that provides service in a different way than some of our other members, and therefore, we kind of took into account, you know, how that plays. And in the same way that council salary, also, you can think about it that way, because we are also, part of this is a service to our city. As well as just, I think, one of the key pieces was also just the percentage change from the current salary to the, than what we might raise it to. Councilmember Forsyth?
And it was also looking at, generally, this is only looked at every couple of years. So, this was building in a pay raise annually to include COLA.
Councilmember Anderson?
I've got two questions. One is, has the mayor's work responsibilities materially changed since 2019?
No, they have not.
And then the second question is, how similar are her responsibilities to the other true executive positions?
To our positions, to mean to the directors? Well, of course, the directors are specialists in the fields that they oversee, but the mayor still has a level of accountability, compliance. She has the, like I said, the hiring and firing authority and such. So, she's over us, and so she has greater authority than what we have. But her knowledge is not necessarily, she may not have the knowledge of exactly all the skillsets that we have because of we're specialists.
One quick follow-up on this, I'm trying to find my words. And specifically, you mean, the executive staff has management specialty, and this is an elected position, so they're fundamentally different, is that correct? And you're saying accountability, and I'm asking about job responsibilities and the work that is done?
Well, when you're talking about leadership, leaders have accountability at the highest level. So, I'm not sure I fully understand your question, I'm sorry, but...
The day-to-day looks much different, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, but a CEO does oversee, has a broad scope over the entire organization, and is responsible to make sure that all of the directors are, and the departments are functioning appropriately.
Understood, I understand that. The other piece was the day-to-day, and then the function of management has a different bucket of responsibilities than an elected official does. An elected official talks to people all day, those kinds of things. And then executive management would be managing schedule, scope, budget, all of those things. That's kind of how I understand when you come to council, that's what you're sharing with us. So, what I'm asking is, have those materially changed in terms of work responsibilities? Because what I'm not seeing is a justification for a significant pay raise. for a significant pay raise. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Councilmember Anderson. And I think, I think I said this when we had this discussion last time, when the former mayor, one thing I want to say is, I'm sorry, Director, you had mentioned that when you said she doesn't have the same skills, I think we're trying to avoid...
My apologies, yes, yeah.
Okay. And, but, but I would make at least a minor argument that it's likely, it's likely, that an elected official for four years probably wouldn't have the same skills as someone who spent their entire career focusing on governance. So I, from a position perspective, I think that's a valid factor. But, so back to the former mayor. I remember him standing at that microphone, explaining to us that the reason for adding the COO position is so that he could spend one-third of his time on regional issues, one-third of his time on local, meeting with the public and meeting with businesses, et cetera, et cetera. And then one-third of his time working with the COO and the directors in making governmental day-to-day decisions. So when I think, when I think of that sort of description of what the mayor of Redmond does, along with the staff and the directors and having a COO, I tend to agree with Councilmember Anderson pretty strongly, that I don't think that the recommendation from staff is the correct criteria for setting the salary. So I'm more inclined to be in what we did a year ago, and maybe some adjustments.
I guess I would ask, since we have had substantive conversation on this in the past, and I will note to the council members that noted about the process last year, that it was a topic of much discussion. And, and it's noted for future items. I think we did bring it up at council talk time. But I think probably could have been handled better. So I'm going to own that as having been part of that discussion and appreciate the feedback. And we'll take that to heart going forward. And so, but hearing this, I'm wondering if we want to just get a sense of whether council members are interested in aligning to the decision that we made last year with perhaps looking at some slight adjustments, given that a year has passed? Just for me, looking even at the 2024 comparative cities data, it seems like, you know, other cities probably, they made their changes last year. So the salaries have gone up a little bit. But I just wanted to put that out there as an option. Maybe we could just go around and say whether you're interested in doing more of the staff recommendation or sticking closer to the recommendation, or just doing what we decided on last year. Does anyone want to get started? Councilmember Stewart?
Sure, I'll kick us off, because I think actually, maybe I'm one of the last ones on this side of the table. But that's great. I am much more comfortable with where we landed last year. And I think what literally happened is the conversation came to a pause because we got the same recommendation from staff tonight. We have the materials. And a lot of really thoughtful, robust conversation did happen last year. So for the viewing public, you may be seeing kind of a protracted conversation here tonight. All of those conversations are available online. To go back to, I think what's important for me is that we deal with the kind of benign neglect of this salary. It is due for some kind of update. And then fix it so that there is a cost of living adjustment moving forward. The other thing that was really important to me when we all began this process for both the mayor and other salaries is that it's taken care of before we vote on the budget so that it's all realigned with that process. So those are the things that are important to me. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And I believe Director Laird is going to give us a recommendation around cost of living adjustment related to this as well. Councilmember Anderson, do you want to weigh in on whether you're good with our, going with what we decided last year?
I'm comfortable with what was on the menu last year.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Fields?
I, I think I...
I think you did. I just wanted to make sure you had your time to say your piece. Council Vice President Forsyth.
I'm good with what we decided on last year, especially since we did that COLA, which was never a process that was included before for mayor's salary, and maintaining the car, the car allotment. We did have a lot of deep conversation. We played with a lot of numbers. We had a very high recommendation from staff, and we landed at what I think we all felt was a really good neutral point. I'm interested to hear what our new council members say, since we do have two new voices. But I am, I'm good with where we landed last year.
Great, thank you. And I believe Director Laird will also give us the updated, if there is any recommendation on the car piece. We'll go to our new council member, Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. I'm interested in going back and actually watching the video and learning more about the conversations that I've got a little bit more in-depth of what went before. Because just taking a look at what the history of the salary has been, if we go back to 2016, it was 137, which in 2016 would have felt completely different than today. Just taking a look at inflation alone, that's going to bring that up to just shy of $180,000 today. So, you know, I like, and that's why I asked the question, on the 170, was the $5,000 additional a year later, was that because of a cost of living adjustment? Is that in there? Is our city the same dynamics as what we were faced with in 2016 to say, you know, up to 2020? Is the mayor's role similar as we're dealing with, with changes in infrastructure, changes in population, couple of crises thrown in there? So I want to take a look at that, that conversation that was had last year, see what all got baked into that number.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Salahuddin.
Yep, thank you. And I concur with Councilmember Noeva Kamina on that very specific, you know, taking a look back at the conversation from last year. But also agreeing with the rest of the council. And, you know, I feel comfortable with what was likely discussed in that robust conversation. And just looking at comparative rates, especially if we adjust for, you know, cost of living and continue to do so, I think that will be important. I had a question on the car allowance. And I know you mentioned, there's a lot of discussion. I don't have a problem with it. I just was wondering, and I know we'll get to council benefits, what the difference is and why council doesn't get a car allowance versus mileage reimbursement, and whether we're being consistent across the two. So maybe that's something that I can review as well.
Great, thank you. Director Laird, do you want to respond to that? And maybe share what your recommendation would be currently on the car allowance as well?
On the car allowance, yes. So the recommendation is, so last, what, okay. So the recommendation is to go with what we had recommended last time, which was $600. So we'd increase it from $500 to $600. The increase would cover, because gas prices had gone up, insurance costs had increases, increased the mileage and general maintenance on the car tolls. And it would allow for more efficiency of the mayor's time spent traveling to and from city-related businesses by having a car allowance. So those were the reasons why we had recommended the $600. I don't know how long the $500 had been in place. So it, last year, we believed that it made sense to increase that. So that would be our recommendation, is to consider increasing that again. But council had made the decision last year to keep the car allowance the same.
Great. And can you speak to the, since we will get to this anyway later, on why we might see a car allowance for the mayor, but that that wouldn't be necessarily considered within the council benefits?
Right, so the mayor, well, the council has the ability to have mileage reimbursed, and they have the ORCA card as well. The council, the mayor, it's a full-time job, and she does quite a bit of traveling. So that is why, at some point, the decision had been made for the mayor to receive the car allowance. I don't know, Melissa, if you want to speak to any of that.
Councilmember Salahuddin.
Yeah, I think just in looking at equity with mileage only, you know, the miles that are added to a car, reducing the car value specifically, you know, if we're, we can look at general maintenance and all of that as well. In terms of reimbursement for council member travel, I know that there's, you know, it's part-time, very part-time. But the expectations are beyond that. And specifically, when we're trying to enhance the, you know, quality of life of our community through our service to community, having that be reflected in council benefits. And I know we'll get to that conversation after this. I think I, I agree with the recommendation of having a car allowance for the mayor, for the council as well. So maybe we can, we can touch base on that later as well. But yeah, $500 a month is, is good with me on that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Councilmember Forsyth had her hand up first. Excuse me, Ms. Forsyth, yes.
All right. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Appreciate that, thank you. I'm interested in the increase to $600. How long the $500 has been in place? And in our new technology-driven world, how many more meetings, since the $500 allowance started, many more of those meetings were in person? And a lot of our meetings now are virtual. I know the mayor still travels to a lot of those meetings, but interested in that balance and figuring out if that $500 balance is meeting that level of virtual plus real world? So if we can figure out when that was initiated, I would be interested in that information.
Yes, I don't know how, when it went into place. Okay, yeah.
Okay, if you can follow up. It sounds like we're going to have a follow-up conversation on this, so we can take that down as a note. Councilmember Anderson.
So to catch you up, personally, can't stand the car allowance. That is just my personal opinion. Also, I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Stewart was adamant about getting an ORCA card for the mayor as well. As, I don't know if we got them for council because of that too. But Director Burt came in and told us that the facilities have cars available for the city of Redmond. And it was slightly more like $750 a month if it was a dedicated car specifically for the mayor. So there was a marginal difference. And that, I think, is probably a question for the council to think about, is if we, you know, city vehicle or personal vehicle. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields?
Did you want me to answer? I can just answer that really quick. So last year, Director Burt did talk about that, and it was approximately about $717 a month. Yeah, so, plus, plus mileage reimbursement, yeah.
Thank you. And I will clarify, I think in the time since that discussion, it was clarified that all council members do have the ORCA card benefit. So if anyone doesn't have one yet, you should make sure to get one. You can, you can get an ORCA card. I got one just before the light rail opened, so. I'm Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. Just real quickly on the car allowance, that we should, or the mayor should know how many miles she logs, right?
I do have some information on that. It's from last year. Let's see. So last year, it was, on average, about 225 miles per month. And mileage reimbursement was, at that time, was 0.655 per mile. So that would, that came out, would come out to about $147 per month, plus parking tolls and some of those other ancillary expenses.
So the car, that would be in lieu of the car allowance, right? That if it was calculated that way?
Mileage reimbursement, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate the point that Councilmember Noeva Kamina made about the complexity of the city. And I think that was actually part of the discussion with council, the council salary commission. But I do want to make sure that we keep in mind that we've addressed part of that complexity by adding a position within those past eight years, 2016 to 2024, with a very important and very position of a COO, which helps mitigate the increasing of complexity. So I don't want anyone to lose track of that, because that's an important point for me.
Okay, so, thank you. So I'm wondering, actually, can you go through on the other related recommendations? And then maybe we'll do one more round, just to see where everyone's at, so that way we can gather council feedback and then hopefully have a final touch before I make a decision on this.
Okay, so the next one is regarding the COLA or CPIW. And so the recommendation is that we would seek your approval to increase the mayor's salary by CPIW each year. CPIW right now averages, well, not right now, but it has averaged between 2% and 3%. In the last two years, it has been well above 6%, but we're seeing it go back down now to a more normal amount. For 2020, we don't have, we don't have 2020 for CPIW yet. For June or for first half, we should have that by July 11th. So council always approves the mayor's salary. So if we do a COLA, if we add a COLA to, you approve to add a COLA to her salary, to the mayor's salary, what you would do is at the, at the end of the year, you would approve that pay plan to increase the mayor's salary to, based upon that COLA. The CPIW will keep the salary current with inflation, internal equity, and the market average. And then, let's see. And we also would be seeking CPIW for salary, for the Salary Commission to consider that for council salary as well. Just the importance of keeping salary in line with what's going on with the market is really important.
Great. And do you have any other recommendations? Just so we can hear all those as well.
The recommendation, the last one, is to have this be effective January 1st of 2025, rather, because, due to budget and also administrative change.
Great, thank you. Questions? Councilmember Anderson?
Just one other question to bring in council members, Noeva Kamina and Salahuddin. The question Ms. Files answered for me last year was regarding the benefits package and the value of the benefits package. Because we're just talking about base salary. So what is the, what is the total benefits that's in addition that council does not get to decide? So we have an understanding of what the total comp is.
Well, if you're talking about health benefits and other benefits associated with that, that would be, it's right around 38%.
38%, okay.
Right. That does not include the $500 for the, currently for the car allowance.
Okay, I remember the number being somewhere around $80,000. So that was, is that, Ms. Files, it says, yes. Okay. So some of this could be something of a correction to make all of that one package. I'm not, that's sort of what I'm detecting a little bit. But I'm, just for understanding, the mayor's salary plus a benefits package that's already been decided and determined that we do not control?
So the benefits package that the mayor, mayor's position follows is that of a full-time FTE.
Okay.
So it's just the same as any other full-time FTE.
Interesting, okay. And then maybe we can just get some follow-up details on what that is. You know what, I probably could find that in my email. Thank you.
I think for the benefit of having a new council, it would be great to get that information shared out as well. Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Oh, sorry, I thought you were asking where we're standing.
Feel free to get us started.
So I already said on the base salary, where I'm at, much closer to where we ended. Thanks for the recommendation on the CPIW. I think that that resolves a lot for us and just makes the system work better. So although we are adopting the new ordinance each time, right? In the future, we would be adopting the new ordinance. It would just be how it works. And would, would kind of take care of the deferred maintenance, if you will, on the, on the, on the salary. I am not in favor, I continue to not be in favor of increasing the car allowance. In addition to where the conversation was last year, we now have four light rail stations that are either open or just about open. And the piece that we don't actually get to discuss in this, in this conversation is the entirety of the travel budget. So the mayor's office tends to, the occupant of the mayor's office the mayor's office tends to, the occupant of the mayor's office tends to travel a lot by airplane to represent the city all over the country, to participate in panels and working groups all over the country and all of that. And the car allowance doesn't actually capture that. And as council members, we have a little bit less transparency into our own travel budget, let alone that of the mayor's office. So on the car, I just, I think where we left off last year is fine. Thanks.
Councilmember Anderson?
I would be in favor of paying cash in additional salary instead of the car allowance, if that was necessary. But I actually prefer a city vehicle instead of car allowance. So if that comes back up.
Councilmember Fields?
I'm sorry, what question are you asking?
Actually, I will ask Councilmember Anderson, are you okay with the CPIW addition as well?
Sure, yeah, that sounds great. I think everybody should have that, so yeah.
Now, I'll do thumbs on the last question. So we'll say CPIW and car allowance.
Yeah, I, there was some discussion about an elected term for years, and I don't remember, it seemed like Councilmember Carson was the main person who talked about that, and that when someone runs her office, that's what they know they're getting into. And I really don't remember the argument or the details. But I'm probably okay with the cost adjustment each year. And I tend to agree with Councilmember Stewart. I think, you know, the nature of the work is different. It's, I would rather see it done on a per-mile reimbursement and parking, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm probably, could be persuaded to, in order to settle this, and stick with the car allowance that we had last year, but my preference would be no car allowance.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I appreciate the idea of the CPIW being brought forward, but I think it kind of takes council responsibility away from us if we implement the CPIW for this particular conversation. I know we do this with our union contracts, and we do this in other, you know, salary negotiations throughout the city. But this is a big part of what we do, and it feels to me like making this big of a change kind of takes away some of the conversation points that we've very thoughtfully had. So I'm in favor of us being proactive and putting that CPI into the version like we did last time, but maintaining that check-in every couple of years as we had just started to do. So I'm against building the CPI in for the future, but for us keeping it as part of the conversation every time we reevaluate.
Just for clarification from Director Laird, so if we were to do the CPIW increase, would that only be for the time until the next scheduled conversation on it were to occur? And at that time, could you make changes outside of CPIW?
Yes, you can make changes outside of CPIW. You can continue it or not continue it, depending upon what you choose to do. So I think I'm understanding your question, which is, I see where you're going, Vice President Forsyth. With regards to council, I'm sorry, the mayor's salary and CPIW, you can decide for, say, the next three years, you're going to just follow CPIW to give an increase, or it could be indefinite, and then you decide to go back and change it. So.
Because we did set the ordinance now that the Salary Commission and the mayor's salary will happen every other year. Isn't that, isn't that right?
We set the ordinance so that we could establish a Salary Commission every year. Right now, the Salary Commission's terms are four years. So should the Salary Commission decide to do a CPIW for the council, then we would do that each year. So we would create time for the Salary Commission to talk about salaries for the council, and whether or not, then they would choose whether or not CPIW was attached to council salaries.
I thought that we had put it, though, in even years, and we had also changed, put even years into the ordinance around the mayor's salary. I'll also look back at it, but.
Yeah, I'll look back at it. But we had put in there to allow, if council wanted to, so it was up to council's discretion, to establish a Salary Commission every year, so we could talk about CPI.
Got it. And similarly, I think there was the mayor's part of the ordinance. I'll look that up while we go to the next comment. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I'd be in favor of it coming up to around that 175, which is where it would be with inflation, had we been tracking all along, building in the CPI, with council being able to revisit it on a regular basis, whether that's two years, four years, to check in, to see, you know, is that, is that tracking? Is there anything else that we need to bring in? I'm also in favor of keeping the car allowance, because if we take, if we break down what's the productivity in resources that we're putting into tracking these measurements, is it, could that be more efficient as having a blanket cost rather than the hours that would be dedicated into tracking it?
Thank you. Councilmember Salahuddin?
I'm sorry, real quick, thank you. Has there been conversation around if we did go to a fleet vehicle for the mayor, which typically, I'm not for fleet vehicles in this instance, but have we taken a look at switching that over to an electric vehicle?
I think that would be a part of our initiative to green the fleet. So were we to buy a new vehicle, it would probably be electric. Was that my guess?
Part of the conversation.
Councilmember Stewart?
Pick me, pick me. Yes, in the sense that there was very robust conversation about a single vehicle, not for the mayor last year, but for a different part of the city, and about whether or not that vehicle needed to be electric or not. So yes, it's been a, and that is why we funded the fleet study, which we heard from Director Burt will be coming to us for our review about, you know, so not the mayor, a car for the mayor specifically. I don't remember a lot of details on that. Councilmember Anderson seems to have all the details really well from last year today. But yeah, every, every single vehicle, we've discussed in depth on whether to electrify.
Councilmember Anderson, did you have a comment? Or no?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Salahuddin?
Yeah, I'm good with CPIW and moving forward with that, and good with the current car allowance.
The 500? Okay.
Yeah. Actually, on that, would be interested to review what Councilmember Anderson and/or, you know, staff sends over, based on previous conversations on that. But as of now, 500.
Great, thank you.
So specifically, we did not offer to buy a vehicle for the mayor. It was using the existing fleet, which was given an average cost per vehicle of $717. A little high on that one. Thanks.
And to be clear, our current mayor uses her own vehicle. So, yeah.
100%. I will say, just really quick with Director Burt, it was to purchase a new vehicle.
Oh, thank you. I will also clarify that we did amend the ordinance that says the Redmond City Council shall review the mayor's salary and benefit compensation every even year. So, and the city council shall reach a decision on any adjustments in the mayor's salary and benefit compensation in time to incorporate in the biennial budget. So it will happen every two years. So if we did do the CPI, it would just be basically for the, the fall, the in-between year. But it would also give us a little bit of guidance. So I will weigh in on my thoughts, which is, I think I am also good with sticking closer to our recommendation from last year. I like Councilmember Nueva Camina's idea of starting with the 175, just to account for inflation since the time that we were going to make that decision. I'm also supportive of the CPIW addition, just to keep up, and keeping the car allowance at 500. So it seems like we have some general consensus on this. However, there are outstanding questions. So if council members want, since I think this is not slated to go, to be decided on until November, which hopefully Director Laird can give us a little bit of insight on why that is. I guess maybe it's just to align better with budget discussions. But, but I think it gives us a little bit of time. If we want to see this back in committee with some of the answers to council member questions, and give our new council members the opportunities to look back at those videos, I can also personally send some links, or have the staff send links to the materials from those sessions, as well as to the videos from those, so that way it's easy for you to find. Director Laird, can you speak to actually the timing on why it's proposed for November vote?
Right, so to correspond with the budget process, and also just have it being effective January 1 of 2025. So rather than this year, from an administrative standpoint as well.
Great. And I will get thumbs on that, just so that they can generally prep the materials for us. Are councilmembers good with including this in the budget and starting it January 1, 2025? I see a question from Councilmember Fields?
Including what?
It would be that if we make this change, it would be effective January 1, 2025, rather than sometime this year.
Yes.
Great. Councilmember Anderson?
I'd like to see a conditional start date on successful completion of Salary Commission.
Great, thank you.
I would agree with Councilmember Anderson.
Great. Well, I guess if we schedule it out to November to vote, hopefully we will, we can wait on voting until we're ready on that. So, perfect. Thank you so much. So I think we have wrapped up that piece of it. And we are at 10 o'clock, but we still have a little time left in our meeting. So let's dive in on the council benefits discussion.
Okay, great.
And we will, if we end up feeling that we need more time for this, we can schedule more time. So I don't want everyone to feel too rushed, but I do know this is an important conversation.
All right. So for council benefits, you have to decide if you would like to make any changes to council's current benefit package, as listed on the spreadsheet that I sent, which was the council benefit comparison spreadsheet, and also to decide on the effective date. So the city's recommendation is for the medical, dental, vision, health benefits, that the city would pay for the total cost of the premiums for council members only. So if the council member wants to select the, our health benefits, there would be no cost for the premium for that. Council members could elect to have health benefits for your dependents, and that you would, you would pay the benefit premium rate at the same rate you currently pay for your dependents. Any premiums that are paid are deducted from your paycheck on a pre-tax basis. Another benefit that we've identified that we would recommend is a $300 a month stipend to cover additional costs you may incur as a council member. This allows you not to have to share any personal income, like some other cities have, where they have the childcare allowance or the housing stipend. They have to share information to HR, whoever maintains that. So it'd be something that you wouldn't have to share. And it's also available to all council members, versus these stipends for childcare or housing or what have you, are only available to those who might potentially need it. And then those, that dollar, those dollars would be added to your paycheck, less any standard payroll deductions. And then, basically, under transportation allowance, that would remain the same. So you have the ORCA card and mileage reimbursement. And then for the technology stipend, that would also remain the same, because currently you have a cell phone and hotspot.
Great, thank you. So to be clear, the $300 per month would be to all council members as a flat rate?
Yes.
Great. Other questions from the council and comments? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thanks. Just one item of note on the ORCA card, since many of us were not aware that that was an option, if we could get that into the onboarding process, and just an immediate, like, this is something that you can have, and make it happen right away, because I also did not get it until this year. And I know Deidra is listening, so hopefully she, I know she's working on some onboarding issues. So hopefully she's making note of that one.
May I ask a quick question? Is there anybody currently right now who don't have an ORCA card? You don't have one? You don't have one either? And you, would you, would you like, would you like them?
I'll make sure.
I'll make sure you get them.
Thank you so much. I'm interested in the ancillary expenses. It sounds like that just is something that we would all just automatically receive through this, okay, through what you're offering right now.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then there's an asterisk here that says that that and the insurance premium would be for new council members. Can you?
No, that just means it's new. That's new.
New for, I see.
New.
My apologies.
For council members.
Read that wrong. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
Yeah, just for clarification, how did we come to $300 per month for those ancillary expenses?
So in looking at the stipends and the allowances from the other cities, we came up with that amount that seemed, it appeared that that was a reasonable amount if you were to do, like, the housing stipend at 500 a month, but you have to be eligible for lower income and such. So it was really kind of a standard amount that seemed to fit within that.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. I continue to be interested in making sure council is able to use this opportunity to discuss these benefits in a way that's going to reduce barriers for those who might be interested in serving the community. And I think when we elevate everyone's benefits just a little bit, we lose out on the opportunity to make a real difference for someone who could really, who's disproportionately impacted by the current setup and what it takes to serve on the council. I'll use a couple of the examples we've talked about frequently, you know, a single parent, this doesn't change the proposal in front of us, doesn't change the cost of putting a child or a dependent on our benefits. And $300 a month for everyone on a childcare basis, some of us will need that, some of us won't. But if we pooled all those resources, we could make a transformational difference, and able to have a more diverse and representative council of our community. So I look forward to continuing the conversation and making sure we're really using this as an opportunity to reduce barriers. Someone who may need childcare being just one of the many examples that we've discussed previously.
Councilmember Anderson?
Is this an FSA account, proposed for the childcare allowance and housing stipend?
It is not, no.
Is there a reason for that?
Um, why it's not an FSA?
Yep, why wouldn't it be an FSA?
FSA is funds that you put into the program.
Okay.
It's not, this is funds that would be provided to you as, as basically cash.
Okay, so is it also only restricted, like an HSA account would be? Is it only, is it restricted funds specifically for the purpose of a housing benefit and for childcare benefit?
The, the $300?
Yes. And the reason I'm asking is because an FSA allows those expenses to be, to be qualified. And then HSA would be like healthcare spending expenses, but that doesn't allow childcare, and it doesn't allow a housing stipend. So I'm just trying to understand what the system is going to be, and it sounds like it's just going to be a stipend, which is, which is fine. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's just going to be a stipend.
Okay. I would be in favor of having a larger stipend to, and looking to the folks on council, which I believe is Councilmember Critzer and Miss, Councilmember Nueva Camina, just understanding kind of what that childcare expense could be. $300 doesn't pay rent, doesn't even pay my HOA dues. So, you know, these are kind of, the comment made by Ms. Stewart is something that I think is really important to think about in context of our current salaries, especially if we can take the time right now to adjust that benefit for our benefit now. I think that's something that's very important to kind of understand conceptually, that our current salary does not cover childcare, and it doesn't cover housing costs in the city. So we can increase equity currently if we adjust the stipend, and the stipend can always be adjusted in the future.
Thank you. And, yeah, to clarify, in case it wasn't clear, that the, I think the proposal, even though in other cities they've used it for childcare or housing, and you could use it for that, it's really that council members could use it for anything. Councilmember, nope. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what the right amount is, but I would, I'm, would be very cautious. And I would, I'm a bit concerned that we would try to decide, given the large variety of lifestyles and life conditions and life circumstances and family circumstances, that if we try to pick one barrier, there's all kinds of barriers out there. People who own small businesses want to represent their city, and I'm telling you, that is a very large burden. There are people, there's all kinds of circumstances out there. So trying to pick one or two circumstances and say, let's overcome that barrier, I am just cautioning this council, that's not a good path to go down, in my view.
Thank you. Thank you. I would throw out there that, you know, potentially we could have a baseline amount and then have an additional amount. For example, if we were to align more with admins, you could have $300 and then have an additional $200 stipend for those who qualify as low income. So that way you have kind of that tool there. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Qualifying for low income is then going to have that council member need to disclose that, which they may not want to. We do need to disclose our income for personal record, for public record. However, it is still underneath a particular band. So if I'm making $38,000, I do not want to go into HR and tell them that I'm making $38,000. Because regardless of if we want to admit it or not, there is a most definite affluent bias, and I'm not saying that our departments have it, it exists. And I would be completely against that.
Actually, one question for perhaps the COO or Director Laird is, is the, would these benefits, how would they be reported? Because I know it's publicly available information, what our payroll is typically, but would this be rolled up within budget or how would it be reported? I guess it would be something that would be public records request available information, but would it be generally published?
Yeah, it would show base salary and the $300 stipend. Is that what you mean, as far as what would be reflected in public records?
Yeah, what would be reflected in what's typically kind of published?
So the pay stub, your pay stub should show base salary. So base salary plus the stipend. And whatever you decide upon, it will show that that's the benefits that are given to the council.
Thank you for that clarification, and thank you, Councilmember Nueva Camina. Councilmember Anderson?
My request would be to explore flexible spending accounts. Just looking up, there are three different types. There's a healthcare FSA, a limited expense healthcare FSA, and a dependent care FSA. And we could have more than one of those specific to council, but that's an approved plan. And then the employer is allowed to contribute to that. So that would help us with the tax records. All the accounts are separately reported and through ACA and all that stuff. So that would, that would be covered there. I think that would help with just the structure. I understand the ease of a stipend, a little uncomfortable with that idea. Not exactly sure if I can put my finger on that right now, but the idea is, I think there needs to be a little structure to the council benefits plan that could be supplemented with an FSA. I would be surprised that the city doesn't already have one.
Thank you, Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I think I might be one of the only councilmembers that actually currently uses our health benefits. There might be more, and I'm just not aware of it. But we do actually have an FSA, or is it an HSA, right?
It's an FSA.
FSA?
Yes.
And that's for the individual to put into. I'm interested in Councilmember Anderson's idea of it just being completely put into an FSA because we all likely have healthcare spending or some sort of spending that it could qualify. I'm struggling with it a bit because I, like, thinking it out long-term. I think I need to think about it a bit more, but I'm definitely interested in that idea. And it seeming like a more structured way of covering our benefits, because in a way, having a stipend almost seems like a setting her own pay. So I get where she's coming from, I need to think about it a little more. I'd love to hear some more feedback from you all.
May I ask a clarifying question? So Councilmember Anderson, are you looking at FSA or HSA?
Personal preference is an HSA all the way, if you have the high deductible plan offer. But that's not a typical, like, silver level plan or whatever the plan is that's offered. I personally don't have the healthcare with the city, so I don't know. And maybe Council Vice President Forsyth can explain it. But ultimately, like, a lot, you know, benefits are complicated and everything like that. But the structure of the account is what I would feel comfortable with. And then the employer contribution can be approved by council. It is not a raise, it's specifically for those things, and an FSA goes away at the end of the year as well, so.
Councilmember Nueva Camina? Did you have a comment here?
A follow-up question on that. So when you're talking about HSA, are you thinking a VIBA account? Is that HSA?
Maybe the city language, yes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, okay.
And I have, personally, I have a high deductible plan with an HSA, and I had it for years. It's great, because you can spend it on, it's your money directly to you, and you keep it year to year, so.
Yeah, no, I understand the type of account you're talking about. There is some actual logistical issues that we would have to address. Not sure it's going to be real doable to do that, but we can certainly look into it.
Thanks, I'm happy to help.
Go ahead.
I know one of the issues that we came up around was equity with childcare. If we were to go with a structured account, more than likely, the childcare is not going to be at one of the commercial childcare providers. It's not going to be at a day camp. It's 10:18 and we're still here, so this is going to be a private babysitter. Those going at $25 an hour, an FSA, it doesn't matter what kind of structured account we go with, it's not going to be paying for that. So then how are we supporting that parent in being able to be here if that's their particular cost of serving the community?
I will jump in as other parent of young council and just say, I agree with that because we've used an FSA before, and it is a lot of paperwork and challenging, and there are certain limits on how much FSA you actually can do per year. So anyway, there's a bunch of different things and limits on what counts towards the FSA. It also, if we did either FSA or HSA, we then would preclude use of this for a housing stipend. Councilmember Salahodin?
That was my exact, the comment that I was going to make.
And just a follow-up on that, you know, wanting to absolutely have guardrails around how we're spending and having some structure there. I understand we do need that, and at the same time, we also need to remove some barriers for serving. And how do we have that in an equitable way to where there's balance and responsibility and good stewardship?
So it sounds like we need a little bit of time to think on this and come back. Hopefully we wrote down a couple of questions. One question I would add in here, and I would just do a round if there are other questions on this from councilmembers, is that I'm also, I am interested in the healthcare proposal. I think it was brought up actually in the mayor's conversation to understand what full-time employees currently contribute for all of these different breakdowns. So I think it's good to be able to move towards some additional healthcare benefit for councilmembers. But again, per our conversation, I think in particular, leaving out coverage for children is just one barrier that we wouldn't be removing for councilmembers that might want to access healthcare. Councilmember Anderson?
Just a clarifying question, for the full benefits, what's the percent contribution for councilmembers? Is it full or is it 50% as shown here? I'm a little confused of what that means.
For council? So for dependents, it's the 50%.
Okay, and then the, a council member needs to pay in full the monthly premium for healthcare?
So in the proposal, the council member has, it's 100% paid.
Okay, great. So after this change is made, anybody can opt into healthcare, and it would be paid for?
For the individual council member.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. Just to clarify, I use childcare as an example, but I think there are a few, and maybe it would be helpful for the council to identify, what are the maybe two to three barriers that we really want to target with whatever intervention? And, you know, we didn't spend a lot of time on the housing one, but that's really important because more than 50% of our city are renters now, which means that in order to serve on our council moving forward, you're going to be experiencing housing, the majority of the council will likely statistically be more likely to experience more housing instability just because you either have to deal with rent increases or move. And if you're in the middle of a term when that happens, you're going to need that stability. So I'd be really, there's a few follow-up questions, I think, that were aired for the staff, but I do kind of think it's a conversation for the council. What do we want to target and how do we want to do it? And there's some great examples from other cities here, thanks.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you, I appreciate Councilmember Stewart bringing that forward. I actually had that exact thing happen the night after a housing forum during the election cycle last year. So that was a very scary moment for me personally, so I appreciate you acknowledging that. And I do want to say to the staff, I really appreciate this proposal that was brought forward. I think it brings us a long way forward and moves us and advances us towards some of our equity goals. I think we've had a lot of great conversation about ways to continue to improve it, but I just wanted to give a moment of appreciation for the proposal that was put for us.
Other thoughts on, just to take, so the staff can also take back if there's other ideas or barriers that we'd want to make sure were addressed as part of looking at this. Councilmember Anderson?
I'd like to see a FSA for dependent care.
FSA, I'm sorry, what?
The for dependent care. And then I think the stipend itself could be a housing stipend. And they would be separate amounts, just something to consider with that. They are a thing. But I think the childcare contribution would be subject to variability throughout the council. So it could be set at a limit or something like that. Everybody could access it, but, and you wouldn't put money into the dependent care account unless that, there's the option to need it, otherwise that money goes away. That's why an FSA would actually be really nice. I know way too much about the point benefits.
I understand what you want for the FSA, but I didn't quite follow.
You could have a separate housing stipend that's set amount that goes into payroll. It wouldn't necessarily be an FSA, it would just be payroll.
I think, yeah, what I'm hearing is there would be, in your proposal, you would have both FSA and stipend.
Correct.
As options. So maybe we can have, for the follow-up, a summary of different options proposed by councilmembers. So we could look at those and kind of come back and say which ones we're most interested in. Councilmember Stewart, did you have a comment?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Great. So unless anyone else has anything, I think we'll plan to have another touch on this, and we can also follow up on the mayor's salary as well. Does everyone go with that? Great, all right. Well, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you so much, COO Files and Director Laird, and do appreciate you bringing these recommendations forward for our consideration. The next item on the agenda is council talktime. Tonight on council talktime, we have a council policy proposal from Councilmember Forsyth. Councilmember Forsyth, I'll give you the floor, Council Vice President Forsyth. I'll give you the floor to share about your idea.
Thank you, I will keep this brief as we are getting very late here. This continues on the conversation that we had at the council retreat about protecting our groundwater. We just recently saw a neighboring city have a bottling water company move in and is using their groundwater to bottle and sell for profit. So this proposal is to protect our groundwater and protect our future generations in the face of climate change. This actually was lifted from a Senate bill that was proposed in the 1920 session season. It passed through the Senate, which is kind of impressive, because that's the harder House to pass. It went to the House, it became an engrossed bill, it made it through committees, and then it, I think it might have been a short session that year, so it didn't come out of executive session. So the bigger bill had a lot more to it, but I only lifted out the part about bottled water, and there's exclusions for if we have a state of emergency and we need to supplement our city water, municipal water supply. So I think it's a fairly straightforward proposal. My ask, along with my co-sponsors, Councilmember Fields and Councilmember Nueva Camina, would be that we talk about it and then see if we could get it in front of our city leadership to see where this would fit within our current code and get this acted on to protect our future generations drinking water.
Thank you so much. And I'm wondering if we want to move to extend the meeting by 10 minutes, just so that way we can have enough time for discussion.
So moved.
Say, there's been a move in a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? It has passed, so the meeting will now be extended until 10:40. Are there comments or questions on the proposal? Councilmember Anderson?
I just noticed in the item B and then also C, it excludes municipal water suppliers. And the language in item B says public water systems. And I would like to get that clarified on what the difference is in terms of supplier versus the system from a public water. So it's a little bit similar, yeah, a little confusing.
I think we would need legal to look at this, and we need our council's permission to have that happen. But I think its intention is that we are the municipal supplier, so that wouldn't prevent us from using water as we need to for the city purposes. That's my understanding.
Cascade is the supplier?
We have both.
Yeah, my understanding of that would be, but I'm not sure, would be that should Cascade come to us one day and say that they wanted to tap our water supply, that they wouldn't necessarily be kept from doing so, we'd have the option to work with them on that.
We would definitely want legal to look at that, though.
Yeah, great. Councilmember Fields? Did you have your hand up? Oh, you didn't, okay, great. Other comments, questions on this? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I have a question, and we're short on time, so I, anyway. I'd love to hear more about how we know that commercial use of our groundwater is currently allowed. Like, has there been, has that been ruled?
So I asked that exact question at our Cascade meeting, and everyone kind of looked at me stumped and said, we don't have any protections.
I remember that. Oh, was it definitive at that meeting, so we already had that direction?
I took, I walked away from that as it was definitive.
Oh, okay.
And if it wasn't, then this will, as a hopper item, will answer that fully.
Got it, yeah, okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. And I would, I would say that I would support, you know, moving this for staff review so that way they could let us know if there are any nuances that would make this unapplicable. But if it is applicable, then move, then after that, move to legal review, would be my proposal. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I think we should talk about, you know, why this is being proposed and do, is there enough council support? You know, putting the dotted i's and crossed t's aside for a moment, the purpose is to protect the water supply from the impacts that a commercialization would have on future generations. And so we haven't talked about that, and I think that's the issue. Getting it right, yes, the process hopefully will get it right. But I think we should answer from a council consensus, or not consensus, but some collective understanding of why this is being proposed and what the danger is, so. I mean, I think it's important that we do this, but I would be very interested in what other councilmembers think.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson, did you raise your hand?
Just, I'm not sure, Ms. Worthy, if you had the definitions that were for the quoted items from the legislation that was proposed somewhere, that would be helpful for this, to get some context.
The links are down below.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it.
I will note, I think one link that's helpful is the MRSC link about water rights. It has links to quite a few cases where other jurisdictions have dealt with this issue. So to Councilmember Fields' point- So to Councilmember Fields' point, like, why, why the urgency? Why the issue of why we want to think about protecting our water supply preemptively before you might end up in some sort of big battle over it? And as I've noted in the past, when we've talked about our CARA and our water supply is honestly ensuring that we're protecting access to clean drinking water for our community should be job number one for us. Just making sure people have the essentials in that, that we can have a healthy community. So appreciate you bringing this forward. Others? Councilmember Stewart got a thumbs up. Others? Good to move this to staff review and legal review? Councilmember Solah Houdin?
Yeah, definitely good to move this forward. And I just want to appreciate Councilmember Fields bringing up sort of the not in paper reason of why this is really important and understanding that for our future generations, we need to consider potential risks like this.
Great, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. Does anyone object to us sending this on to our staff and legal for review? Great. Councilmember Stewart?
Just a comment for any staff remaining on the line. Or we understand that folks are real, real busy right now, especially folks who are working on a giant code package for us. So I am happy to send this to staff review and patient in the sense that everyone's got a full plate right now at this exact moment in time. And I know there's a lot of sensitivity to that right now, and I just want to communicate that we get that too, so thanks.
Thank you very much for bringing that up, Councilmember Stewart. And I think, hopefully, the council can temper your expectations in terms of the timing since we have a lot of balls in the air right now in terms of policies. But as staff are available to look at it, and there may be some touches too. They may come back with more information. We can share it back with the council, but we can keep everyone in the loop. So it seems like we got the answer we need on that one. And so I will just note a couple of things for the rest of council talk time. First of all, just wanted to quickly touch base with you all on our plan for Redmond Derby Days coming up really soon. So July 12th to 13th, everyone's getting excited in the community, and the council will be participating in the parade. So council leadership just wanted to touch base as we get the staff support for our parade. One of the ideas that was originally, was proposed was potentially highlighting multimodal ways of getting around, especially rolling. So we came up with the idea that maybe everyone could come with their favorite rolling device, whether you're on roller skates, or a bike, or a scooter, or pushing a stroller, that we could do wheels kind of as the theme, could be fun. And we could invite our families to all join us. So that was the idea that we came up with. But also open to just marching and having fun and handing out maybe candy or something. So just wanted to throw it out there, get council feedback, so that way we can let the staff know. Councilmember Solah Houdin?
I would love to be on my feet. So I, yeah, without wheels.
Maybe we could get you a pinwheel.
That would be great.
Councilmember Stewart?
I'm considering curating a bubble wand variety collection for us. Would that be okay with the council? I spent a lot of time on the internet, bubble wands.
Oh, I actually really love the bubble wand idea.
There's some whimsy.
Other council members?
For the record, I'm totally down with some whimsy. We got a lot of intensity in our lives, so I'm totally down with the whimsy.
All right, so it sounds like council members kind of want to do own thing but bring some fun. So how about potentially bubbles? Potentially, some people are going to bring some wheels. Are folks good with if we include our families in addition to ourselves? I think, great, okay, I'm seeing some head nods here. And then I think we're going to try to find some sort of music, either be near the band or bring some music with us. So let's go with the whimsy theme. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Whimsy sounds good. We do need to give direction to staff on what will be announced for council. So if we want to set around our multimodal initiatives or around something else, I don't want to spend a lot of time tonight talking about it, but if you want to email Deidre with your thoughts, and then she can get it back to council leadership so that we can find a cohesive message for council.
Yeah, if folks are good, I think we could probably also just kind of summarize some top things from our strategic plan, like things that we care about, maybe one fun fact or something. So, Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I'm going to be out of town. I have a family event. My sister's turning 80, so I'll be in California. But I will offer Councilmember Solah Houdin my electric motorcycle if he wants to make a statement about emissions and climate change and...
Talk offline.
I believe we may need to extend the meeting by five more minutes. Is that?
So moved.
Great, thank you.
Sounds good.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's one no. Okay, I think it was, it passed, so we'll just go to 10:45. So, okay, great. We'll follow up, and we'll have Deidre just send out an email with the final logistics on that. And you all should have gotten many emails from Deidre in the last while about upcoming logistics, also about other events like Rockin' on the River and different things that are going to be coming up for the listening public. Rockin' on the River will be Wednesdays, July 31st, August 14th, and August 21st, so mark your calendars. Did want to note for the council that next Tuesday, you should have gotten a calendar invite, but very important for everyone to be here at 6:15 next Tuesday for our council photo with the mayor. For our big group photo, it was the day that everyone said they will be here in person, so no virtual attendance that day, so we can all take that photo. Some of us do have the CFD at 6:30, so please arrive a few minutes before 6:15 if you can, so we can really do the photo right at 6:15. And we'll be, hopefully, it'll be pretty quick, be done within 15 minutes. And then those who don't have the CFD can take their time before the council meeting. Other thing I just wanted to update for you all is that, is that the, sorry, that we were able to reach out to the school boards per the previous hopper item that we talked about. There's a potential to have a meeting on August 1st, which is a Thursday the week of a fifth Tuesday week, which I think is like July 30th. So wanted to check in to see whether council members would be available. We can also send out an email. I'm seeing a no head shake on that, so we can... August 1st, yeah, did I say August 1st? I said July 1st, no, August 1st. No, well, July 30th is when the fifth Tuesday is, but August 1st, Thursday, August 1st, is when the meeting would be proposed for. We just heard from the superintendent of the Bellevue School Board, or the Bellevue School District, that they may be available that night. So that's a potential, and we can send out a message to try to get availability. But if anyone knows right now that you can't make that time, just let us know. I see one, okay. So we'll just follow up, and if you can please respond, that would be great. We also have reached out to the Lake Washington School District, and they want to wait until school starts, mostly because of some of the schedules of their school board members who may not be around during the summertime. So probably this fall will be an opportunity to be able to meet with them. So that's just a few updates, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Stewart, who seems to have an item, thanks.
Yeah, there's three things that are pretty material and are coming to the 2PW Committee next week, Committee of the Whole. It's a very packed agenda. Three of these items, you already have all the materials for, so I wanted to give you a heads up. First is the Economic Development Strategic Plan. This is going to be our last touch. Three of us also attended briefings with the staff, so I think questions were answered. Feedback was integrated. The CIP quarterly update, you got that from Vanji on Friday, Vanji Garcia. We're going to have an opportunity for folks to ask their questions. And this, to me, feels significant because it's kind of our last touch on the current CIP before we start working pretty immediately thereafter on the new one. Finally, you heard from Director Burt yesterday about our new competitive bid, the result of the competitive bid process for the new garbage recycling and compost hauler. We will have a touch base on that next week. You already have those materials, but there will be a staff report planned for that contract. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Solah Houdin?
Yeah, I'll keep mine really quick. I've been connecting with Eastside Audubon, and they offered a bird walk on July 9th at 5:30. It would be after committee on that Tuesday, July 9th. Wanted to sort of gauge interest. I know it's late, but I will be doing it. So they invited all of council. I'll have Deidre coordinate if there's mass interest, but, yeah.
Thank you very much. Any other items? Seeing none, I will just note that at our business meeting next week, there is an executive session, but it might get moved just due to schedules. So, but, and also that Redmond 2050 Phase 2B and 2C Final Review will be a staff report at that meeting, and I believe Director Helen sent us an email about that today. So with that, if there are no other items, for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned?